Welcome to the 20th meeting of the Milton Planning Board fiscal year 2023. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and make introductions of the board and our staff.
Maggie O'Field, member.
Shawn.
Shawn Fahey, member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Tuchel, Mrs. Clark.
And Meredith Hall, Chair. And the staff will be joining us remotely. We have, well, we have Julia here. Julia, you can introduce yourself first.
Julia, can I?
Did you get Rich?
We don't see him.
We don't see him.
My name's up there. Come on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rich. I did not see him.
It's okay.
Yes, Rich, please introduce yourself.
Yep, Rich, female member.
Great. And Tim?
Tim Zierwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And Josh?
Josh Eckertley, Assistant Town Planner.
Great. Thank you so much. And to begin, we have a set of minutes from February 23rd that Julia had sent out. I did read what was on there. And Cheryl, does that include all of your edits?
Sorry, I don't think I'm recalling whether that one is one that I edited. Julia?
Okay.
I don't think I got any edits from you on those. Okay. Sorry. I think I need to review those.
That's okay. Not a problem. I just wanted to double check. So we can defer the approval of the minutes from February 23rd. Our next meeting dates we have scheduled currently are for March 30th and we have also April 13th. And Maggie, you said you might have a conflict.
Yes. Yes, yeah. But I'd be available at any other day that week if we want to change it.
So that would be Thursday. I don't know if members would be available on the 12th?
I was just gonna say the 11th is the Conservation Commission meeting.
Oh, yes. That's great. Okay. So we won't, for those of you, I don't know if you heard, Conservation Commission is meeting on the 11th and this project may be discussed. Would the 12th work? Is that good for you, Tim?
From a calendar perspective, it's all fine. One thing that we'll need to think about, and you know, there's some options and flexibility here, is the public hearing for the zoning reclassification article. That's gotta be advertised two weeks in a row. If we had a meeting on the 13th, we'd be able to advertise it on March 30th and April 6th. If there's a meeting after that, we're still good, but if there's a meeting before that, we'll need to kind of figure out a schedule for that because a meeting on the 12th or earlier doesn't allow for the 14 days of notice in the newspaper. So, you know, totally, I mean, there's plenty, there's plenty to do in terms of having a full agenda for a meeting on the 12th or whatever, but then we'll need to think about, you know, do we want to have that public hearing on the 27th or another date, you know, between now and town meeting?
I am not available on the 12th.
All right. Then why don't we keep it for the 13th, unfortunately, Maggie? But, yeah, so then we can keep that public hearing, Tim, just in case. I doubt we're gonna need an extra date, but at least we're protecting ourselves with that. So we'll keep that for the 13th. Okay. Great. Now we can have a staff update, Tim?
So that was one thing. So that's good. We'll get that advertised and ready to go. And there may be a little bit of discussion later on in the agenda about that article and others. Just a couple of things, and they're all kind of relevant to scheduling. A couple meetings ago, we had wanted to have Mira Patel, the Town Environmental Coordinator, come in to do a brief presentation on some stormwater and low-impact design regulatory kind of proposals. It would be great to get her in at some point soon, whether it's the 30th or the 13th. You know, again, for a brief presentation, just to sort of keep the board apprised of what she's up to and maybe give staff a little bit of guidance in terms of maybe preparing some rules and regs, updates and potentially some zoning updates for the future, you know, relative to stormwater, site disturbance, low-impact design. These are all issues that the board has expressed a lot of interest in pursuing. Meredith, we can kind of chat offline about developing the agenda for the coming meetings, but that's something that I think we'd like to get on in the near future if possible. The other thing is we received an application for modification of a subdivision at 1041 1065 Brush Hill Road. Old-school folks remember this one. This is off of Brush Hill Road. It's, the modification is not that extensive. It's effectively, there's an existing carriage house on the property that the current owners would like to take down and move slightly on the site. And my move by just needs to rebuild a similar type structure elsewhere on the site, but there are certain modifications of the conditions of the original subdivision approval that will need to be modified. You know, given, again, the kind of the schedule that the planning board has and all the stuff that's on its plate, you know, my recommendation would be not to take this up until the April 27th meeting. We can't go too much later than that, although there is a little bit of leeway in the scheduling, but that application is in, it's been stamped at the clerk's office, so there is a clock in terms of when the board needs to make a decision and hold a public hearing on that. But I'm not advising that we do that one on the 13th. I'm advising that we do that one on the 27th if it's possible. So, again, that's something that Meredith and I can kind of work through offline unless anyone has kind of any input on that question. And that's it in terms of staff update for now.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So at this time, I would now like to open it up for citizen speak. And if anyone would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda tonight, please feel free to do so. If not, you will have an opportunity as the agenda, as we move through the agenda. Are there any hands up in the public for citizen speak? Nope?
There are no.
And anyone else here with something pertaining to that on the agenda? And I don't see anyone who wants to speak on that. All right. So at this time, we can reopen our public hearing of 111 Highland Street Memory Care Facility, continued from March 16th. And we will, just to let everybody know, we will be discussing, we're gonna be hearing some updates to some questions, but really, this is just to pertain to the construction management plan and the discussion of the tree plan. And we really are gonna have to have a hard stop, you know, about 8:45 to get onto some other items on our agenda. So with that, I'd like to invite the developers to come and present, and then we'll have time for the public to comment.
Good evening again. You can have Meredith for the record, Ms. Parkland, behalf of North Beach Communities LLC, which is the option for this special permit. And I'm joined by Eric Green from Earlman Construction, who have put together the draft of the construction management plan. I did submit yesterday a slight revision to that plan. It's revised Thursday, dated March 21st. The basic revision was that Eric and my wife both had the same great idea, which is to put a surveillance camera on the site, directed at the driveway entrance, so we can monitor who comes in and comes out, whether they follow the proper routes or not. And so we added that. We added that to be an alternate form that every employee in would be required to sign as they were coming out of the site. So with that, let me introduce Eric Green. He can walk through the plan and then obviously any questions, suggestions, or thoughts about how to improve it were all his.
All right. Thanks, Ed. Yeah, my name's Eric Green. I'm a Vice President with Earlman Construction. I've been there for 15 years, been in the industry for 40 years. And I head up our residential groups or anything, senior living, hotels and apartments comes through my, we do this type of work quite a bit in neighborhoods, occupied communities. So we did put together a construction management plan based on all of our experience. And if you want, I can just kind of walk you through it. It really has two parts. The first part is what happens outside the gate, which is probably the most important part for this meeting. Essentially, we want to make sure nobody comes off of Reed's Road and makes a left onto any of those ladder streets. So if you look at the CMP, we're proposing putting some signs up there that basically say no construction, you know, no construction traffic coming through these streets. That generally helps a lot. And then the other thing we'd like to do is put a camera at the entrance, like Ned was saying. So if anybody does come down any of those ladder streets, particularly Spafford, and makes a right and heads to the site, we can get the license plate number of the car. If anybody goes out of the site and makes a right, same thing, we could pick that up. Part of our program is when we sign subcontractors up, when we sign up individual workers on the site, that they sign an agreement that's in the construction management plan that basically says they understand that they're not supposed to do these various things. They're given a map of the locale that's included in the construction management plan. That's sent to their office. It's part of the contract. It's part of the welcome to Earlman, welcome onto the project site. So we do all those things, and then at our weekly PM information meeting, we go over it again. Typically, these plans work very well, but the problems we generally have are kind of the road driver that comes from Canada and it's a one-off delivery type of thing. And they don't know until we tell them, they didn't get the message somehow. So generally, the day-to-day work is we don't have a problem. They understand the program. It's not that. It's an occasional delivery that we really have to try to get to the trucking company ahead of time and let them know the rules. For the concrete suppliers, not bad. We can talk to them. Lumber suppliers, we can talk to them. It's not a massive project. It's a one-and-a-half-story building, so we don't have, you know, the expected deliveries you would get with a high-rise, for example. I don't know if that's enough information. I can walk you through the construction management, but really, the other half is what happens on-site. We have parking for 50 cars on-site, which is probably gonna be enough. We'll probably start out with 15 to 20 workers and probably peak at maybe 100. Again, it's not a huge building, so we do try to encourage carpooling and, you know, park and ride, those type of things. But I think the 50 spots on-site should be enough. If not, we'll find something off-site that people can carpool from.
That's great. Yeah. Looks like a very good construction management plan. Did, I'd like to hear from members of the board if they have questions. Cheryl, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I was looking at the site plan with the staging area, and it looks as if the staging area on what I'm calling the upper parking lot, so the one that's away from the building, that staging area looks to be larger than the parking lot itself. And I think it's important that we protect as many trees as possible. So it seems to me that there ought to be a pretty clear demarcation of where that staging area could be. I've seen plenty of construction sites where the staging, the equipment, the materials get stopped right at the trunk of a tree, and we know that that's damaging to those trees. And so I'd like to have you refine that rectangle of staging. So on this plan that I'm seeing on the screen, it would be towards the bottom of the sheet that I'm referring to.
Right. Yeah, I think the area off to the right where the starch it is, is expanded, but if there's any trees, then we can pull that back. That's not a problem at all. We certainly wouldn't think that anymore, tree, if we're going to call for the permanent parking lot, so we can make that stipulation. That's not a problem at all.
Yeah, the color goes beyond the parking lot, both on the right and the left, if understanding the drawing progress. So it would be better if it could be limited just to the parking footprint.
Okay. Yeah, that parking's about 40, about the permanent parking's 40 spots, but I think we get another 10 in there during construction. Kind of where it says additional staging, there could be some parking right there. So I think we got 50 spots even when we pull it back to the correct size.
And then, in terms of how you stage when you have so many retaining walls, can you talk about how the progress of the construction would work here?
Well, we have to, basically, the site contractor would be the first person on-site. We won't be able to get any other trades until we build that entryway in. So that's made out of versatile retaining walls, which goes fairly quickly, but there's some utilities in there. So the plans are kind of to build our way into the site. There won't be a lot of subs until that road is done, though. I've not been answered your question, but it'll be done by one site contractor, the whole thing.
So they, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, in terms of staging for demolition of basically soil removal, tree removal, stump removal, things like that. So you would build these versatile walls coming in for the roadway, and then you would have some kind of temporary staging area while you do tree removal and soil removal? Is that how it would work?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I think we can get in there to do the tree removal. I was talking more about the foundations. You know, the site contractor would be responsible for the tree removal and a couple of those things you mentioned, but we wouldn't start any heavy foundation work until that road is built. But I do think there'll be some tree clearing, you know, while the road's still in, they can get in and out of there.
And then, you seem being able to, let's say, work your way from the middle of the, let's say, the footprint of the building outward, so that you're not needing to go any further beyond the construction, so you don't have to take equipment, let's say, and run it within the area between the retaining wall and the butter, the cardy property. I'm trying to understand if you could manage the construction site to keep it as tight as what's shown as the limit of construction line?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. It's only two stories on that backside where you're talking about the property line over there. We don't need a lot of room to work back in there. We'd be certainly within the area that's shown. There's no reason going wider than that.
So one other thing, I'm not sure if you were at the meeting last week, but I had asked if we could put dimensions on that limit of work line and be held to it. Would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's fine with me. I wasn't at the meeting last night, and that's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Shawn?
Just a few questions for the neighbors, if you could. Could you give them some time reference for the different phases of work, so they could have, you know, a general understanding of the duration of site work, for example? So, you know, it would help them understand how long heavy equipment's gonna be operating nearby.
Right.
The duration for foundation, you know, the duration for framing, which always brings an element of noise, you know, to a neighborhood. But if you could talk a little bit about, you know, the durations of the project from beginning to end, and, you know, obviously, when you get towards the end of the project, a lot of the noise is inside the building, not outside the building, so they could have an understanding for what the experience might be like.
Sure. Yeah. So assuming a project starts sometime in October of this year, site preparation is basically October, November. That would, you know, include bringing the road in. Site work would probably be through December, you know, getting the site already. Foundation would start in December and probably go December, January, February, probably those three months. Concrete slab on grades, kind of January through March with all the other slab roughens. And then the superstructure you talked about, the wood frame, is, you know, February, March, April, May, kind of in that timeframe. Building envelope, which will include the roof, the windows, and the siding, is May through November of '24. And then the interior work would be May of '24 through April of '25, which is basically the contract completion date. It'll be, you know, anything we do will be fairly small cranes, you know, it's only, you know, two stories aligned and one story on it. There won't be any big cranes, any big equipment like that, you know. There'll be concrete trucks for the foundation, there'll be delivery trucks with the panelized wall systems, and a small mobile crane to erect the panels and the roof trusses and things like that.
Okay. So overall, approximately 18 months?
It's roughly 17. October, I think it's 17.
Okay.
16, 17 in that range.
Okay. Okay. Great. That's helpful. And in terms of the traffic leaving the site, obviously, we want to make sure that our streets remain clean. And what's your methodology for having a method of having tires be clean by the time they hit the street?
Yeah, we'll have a track pad there, you know, brush rubble. And then after that, we will sweep the street occasionally if it gets bad. You know, during the concrete operations, it'll get a little muddy, we'll sweep that up with a street sweeper. And we try to get the binder down as quickly as we can to stop that from happening. Once we get the binder done, it's usually pretty clean after that. We don't have a problem getting a street sweeper, and we put that in the construction management plan. As new, the other thing is if we need a police officer for certain deliveries, we'll certainly do that as well.
Sure.
That'd be kind of a rare occasion that we would need for traffic.
But it seems like your binder won't be down until probably late spring of '24?
Yeah, probably, yeah, you're probably at March.
Yeah.
March issue.
April. Yeah. Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
Maggie? My question was just mostly on the hours of construction. So I see that you have it from 7 to 5 Monday through Friday, and Saturday it's 7 to 5. I think elsewhere in town, our Saturday hours are 9 to 5 on Saturday. So I kind of would like to see that changed to 9 to 5 and no work on Sundays.
That's okay. You guys, yes, thank you.
So the Sunday's is fine. I think we had no work on Sundays. That's fine. I mean, we'll certainly take a look at that, you know, adjust that. Might create a little bit of further extension into the schedule. So the trade-off on that, but, you know, Saturday, Saturdays from 7 to 9 is a normally applied time, and I understand that, and we might want to try to honor that as much as we can. So definitely take a look.
Maybe else, Maggie?
Nope. That's all I have for now.
Rich, I'm sorry. Do you have your hand up? I, we're not able to see you this evening for some reason, so.
I don't.
Okay. Great. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss you. Okay. Great.
Meredith, one thing just to keep in mind, if and when we get to the point of a decision, but we've heard this from the building commissioner on previous permits, in terms of, and I don't have them on my fingertips, so the hours that Maggie just referenced may well line up with the sort of the typical hours. I know it's been an issue in other permits that we've done where if, you know, there's the desire to sort of limit the hours of construction if they're different from what the usual kind of enforcement kind of scheme is in town, the building commissioner has a tough time, kind of, you know, he likes to be consistent so that he knows if it's, you know, 6 o'clock on a Saturday, just no construction anywhere, you know, you're expected of anything. And then when there's different rules for different projects, enforcement gets a little bit hinky in that regard. So I'll, you know, double-check on what the sort of the usual hours of construction are. Like I said, Maggie may be right on the ball, I just don't have them on my fingertips, but we'll just want to keep that in mind, you know, if and when there are conditions into a decision.
Okay. Great. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it. And on construction, does anybody from the audience would like to speak at this time on the construction piece? Or if not, you'll have an opportunity?
I'll go first, I guess.
On construction, yes.
Simple questions.
Yes.
I think I'll sit here. Yeah, so, Bardai Rezai, I love Spafford Road, hello everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I will read the plan in detail, just today was slammed, so I haven't had a chance to really go through it, but I think one of my main questions, and I appreciate the comments at the top about construction signs on the ladder streets and then the surveillance camera, thumbs up. Thank you. But I think one of the concerns we've had is that it's happened a few times, I've lived on Spafford for five years with my family, and it's happened a few times where, for whatever reason, maybe one time a tree came down partially, one time there was some roadwork being done and Highland, you know, was down to one lane. It's really narrow. I think you, and we'll, just to refresh your memory, we'll see it on a sidewalk, I think go first, but it's really hard, if there's any obstruction there, for traffic, for two-way traffic to get by. So, you know, and we understand now from the traffic report, it's over 4,000 vehicles a day that could get it going, you know, cutting across Highland. So I guess one of our concerns is, as I mentioned, those times where the street is obstructed, all that traffic doesn't want to sit there, it backs up, and then they just start shooting down on the ladder streets. And while you guys can control some of your construction traffic, you're not gonna be able to control, I don't think, the commuters and, you know, all of all you. So I guess my question is, you know, how do we deal with, or when can we expect police details, or, you know, if there's 233 trees being cut down, you know, and some of those are 70 feet, 80 feet, you know, and there's, I imagine, huge, huge trunks on huge trucks, and as they're coming in and out, that's gonna block traffic. And so, you know, how do we manage that? And how do we, you know, how can we mitigate, you know, the interruption, the disruption to the current flow, which is significant? Because, you know, like I said, the times that it's happened were like, what is this? It's like just constant, every one or two seconds, someone flying down to the point where the street backs up all the way up from Reed's Road all the way up to Highland. And so I think that's something that has us scared, you know. We don't want to see that happen, and, you know, you know, we can envision with, I know you said it's, you know, only one-and-a-half stories, it's maybe not as big as some of the projects they do, but it's huge for this spot. So that's one question. I don't know if that's something we want to talk about now, or, but how do we, how do we prevent or limit, you know, the street being obstructed? You know, even just down to one lane, you can slow it, and then people are just gonna start zooming down all four ladder streets.
Yeah. So generally, when we cut the trees, I would chip as much as we can chip, so that that gets chipped up. The trucks that leave, you know, if there's traffic in the street, that's only they'll hold them up. Once they leave, they leave. But if we need to get a policeman to get them out safely, or have one of our own flag people just to get them out safely back on the road, we'll certainly do that. I mean, getting them on the site won't be a problem, they'll just pull on. But if there's a lot of traffic and they're trying to get off the site, you know, we may have to get, put a policeman in just to stop, or have to let them out. But we shouldn't hold up the traffic, we shouldn't be the, we shouldn't be the reason traffic slows down. We just need to be able to get out in the flow and move.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I'm sure you've been out there, but, you know, Highland is barely, but I think it's 21, 22 feet wide. And for large trucks to turn it out, they're, they do swing, with the current driveway as it is, they do swing and block most of the street. So I think, we see it all the time when they turn into the hospital parking lot and traffic starts to back up. So I guess if that's happening regularly, you know, I think we may need, you know, some plan for how to make sure that traffic doesn't, you know, doesn't back up and start using these alternate routes on a regular basis. And, you know, maybe that's in certain periods, like when Shawn was referring to the, you know, the whole timeline, maybe in certain periods it's not an issue, but, you know, we'd really appreciate it if we could figure out how to not let that happen or minimize it to the extent possible.
Yeah, the, you know, the, we can certainly work on the timing of when we take stuff off-site and when stuff is delivered. That's not a problem. So we find out from 10 to 2 is the best time to haul big trucks off the site. We can, we can time that, and that's not a problem. You know, concrete trucks will need to get on probably in the mornings, but other deliveries, we can time them during the day. That should help. We just need to know the traffic flow around it a little better than timing, I think.
Yeah, in the morning, morning, so it's 7 to 9, it's pretty heavy, I think the, and then like from 2:30, right now it's 2:30 to 4, it's pretty heavy, and then again from like 5 to 6.
Pretty normal. Yeah. Yeah.
We, I mean, we on Spafford, I think, from the counts that we've done historically, in 2019, the DPW did, and then in this latest traffic report, we get more than the neighboring streets, just because we're the last one before the light and we're closest to the hospital back entrance. But I could also envision, like, if things back up, like you could start getting Clifton or Martin, the one tire out, but would start getting used more, you know. So I think it's, it's for all, for all those four streets, it's a concern. So appreciate, you know, thinking of that ahead of time, and we can see what we can do. You know, because you can control the, to a certain extent, control the, you know, your construction vehicles, but the world around us and, you know, what's, what's currently, you know, the current situation is just heavy volume of traffic. So if that, you know, that road gets disrupted, or if there gets to be a detour of some kind, you know, I'm almost thinking like, do we have to like start the detour before those streets so that they don't, you know, you know, or figure out that, so that loops all the way around Reed's Road to Cannon to Highland rather than, you know, down one of those, one of the latter streets?
Eric, I have a question, if I could. This project is obviously proposed to be built in a neighborhood.
Right.
And, you know, Bard has spoken at length in regard to the interest of his neighborhood and really on behalf of many of the people there. Should the project move forward, is there a way that you could communicate with the neighbors so they could understand what might be upcoming the next month? And maybe there's a designated person in the neighborhood that could be the recipient of that, and you don't have the burden of sharing with the neighborhood, but you'd have the responsibility of sharing with a designated person who could then share with the neighborhood. And maybe in the, in the interest of, you know, making the experience as palatable as possible for the neighbors, you know, sometimes it's providing information and communication that would probably make the project better for your team and also better for the neighbors. So, you know, eliminate surprises, you know, tree clearing is going to begin, we expect it to take three weeks. There'll be significant noise as a result of chainsaws and, you know, things of that nature. You know, just in the interest of making it, I guess something like a, like two-week look ahead.
Sure.
With progress reports against the look aheads. Doesn't even have to, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we do that, we do that quite a bit. We set up a website, and you can just go to the website, we can update it every week.
I'm sure you're doing it for your client, you know, your client expects that. So, you know, it's a matter of just extending that to the neighbors, Ned, so the neighbors would have an opportunity to see that.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
We can add that to the plan.
We did that, we did summarize and we did that, we're doing a lot of work in for a client right now. Same thing, a lot of neighborhoods, we have a weekly update.
That's great. Excellent. Anyone else? Is that it, Bard? Thank you.
Okay.
I know, we'll, yeah.
Thank you very much.
We're trying to keep to just this topic, and, but this is not the end, you know, this will not be the last meeting, so, thank you.
Can I jump in first?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
So, Teresa Ryan, I live on, I feel like I've seen you all on this.
Yeah, well, nice to see you in person.
Exactly. So I was really surprised when I saw the construction plan today in The Times. I do commercial real estate, but in Boston, where you can't work on Saturdays. So all of a sudden I saw seven to five on Saturdays too, I'm like, oh my God. So like, I live right beside it, for all the neighbors, there's like three families with babies, like kids, I have teenage sons. No one wants to be, like Saturday is our day, like can we limit this to Monday through Friday? It's 18-month project. To say every Saturday is a lot.
I think what we're going to do is look at other permits and see what we've done typically. Tim is going to check that out. Certainly, you know, Maggie's suggestion with the hours, it's, I think the question is, do you delay the length of the construction period if you're?
To listen to it for six days in a row, like kids get up, we don't even need an alarm anymore. When they're direct to Potter's, I, I will need an alarm for the next 18 months.
I guess if, if you don't mind, I could speak to this, I obviously work in the same industry that you work in.
Yeah.
And I appreciate where you're coming from, and I think that Earl and would prefer to have a project that runs Monday to Friday, and subcontractors staff the project appropriately Monday to Friday. So what your interest is, is also their interest. And I think it's worth exploring, Eric, because I have that challenge within our business as well. And I think there's an opportunity there, you know, to meet that expectation. You know, obviously, there are projects that are active on Saturdays in town, but I think in the interest of, you know, creating the most appeasing environment you could, Ned, in that neighborhood, I think a conversation beyond this meeting, you know, should take place with the applicant and with Earl and to try to come up with a plan that contains the work to Monday to Friday. It can be done. It can be done because I know it can be done.
Oh yeah, it certainly can be done. We generally work Saturdays, it's not a full crew. We generally do work Saturdays on our projects just because we need to make up the time, because it's always short staff. But if you are going to talk about that, maybe we could consider at least working inside the building on Saturday. So when we get the building enclosed and it's finished work, you're going to hear people call in the site and the doors are going to close after that, they'll all be inside the building. That might be something to compromise on.
I think so. I think if it's a situation where it's internal to the building and the neighbors obviously wouldn't hear the activity.
Right.
I think that's a different situation for the neighbors. But the exterior of the building, you know, formwork, site work, framing, roofing, siding, you know, all of those things that take away from the enjoyment of the weekend, honestly. So I think, I think that would be worth creating a plan for.
Thank you.
That's great, if we can do that, yeah. So, good, thank you for coming tonight. Okay, great. Thank you. So now on the tree manager, oh, would you like to speak on the construction? Okay. We're just keeping it specific to the construction this evening.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity, and I especially want to shout out to Richard Meele for last week in this residence, all of it, more time, Meele. Going back to the driveway, how wide, oh, I'm sorry, Jeter, one town meeting number, please, at 9, 120 Highland Street. How wide is this driveway with three gears in, double beam target?
The driveway is 22 feet wide, it's probably, that's the right side.
Okay. How tall will the retaining walls be along the sidewalk, along the driveway?
The height will bear, it'll mainly go up and go back down, the height will be somewhere between 10 and 20 feet.
Okay. Going back to Cheryl, the ISE here and a half ago, and Maggie Oldfield several weeks ago. We've been waiting for a swept path analysis. I personally got a fire truck, a lot of logging trucks, or anything else to make that corner. And I think they have giant trucks doing five, 10, 15-point turns trying to get down that narrow driveway is going to give traffic nightmare.
We presented a swept path analysis last week.
No, we didn't. The swept path analysis that's ordered by the Commonwealth of Mass Regulations calls for a computer simulated software swept path analysis. And that's what we'd like to see, because we think this driveway is going to be so congested, let alone, you know, the construction crews working there, we don't think first responders are going to have any chance in the event of an emergency. Because we've been talking about, you know, at nighttime, maybe short shifts of eight staff. Again, they had to evacuate the building, you've got 70, 80 people with memory issues. We're going to need all kinds of equipment down there, and there's no way this road is going to be adequate. I think in most cases, where they do have construction site like this, it's not dead-end. This site, we believe we should at least talk to Winter Valley about being able to continue right on through. Because the fire department is generally looking at 20 feet wide one way. The, this 22-foot wide way, a fire truck is almost, it's 90 feet, it's alive with the mirrors. And you have to have room for the guys to open the doors, stuff like that, so they're going to be parked sort of in the middle of the driveway. And traffic won't give you a throw, so.
Thank you, I do appreciate that, and we're, that's definitely something that we're going to be coming back to and discussing.
Yes, and the swept path analysis also, if I may add, it showed a little bit around the front door. There was nothing out by Highland Street on a swept path analysis that I saw. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Meredith, we've got one hand up in the, in the zoo.
Okay. Welcome in, if you can introduce yourself.
Nadine Hannah. You want to give us your name and your address for the record?
I think you may be muted, is that?
Sorry, got it. Nadine Hannah from 11 Stafford Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak in regards to the limited Saturday construction hours. And I just think it's worth mentioning that Northbridge has mentioned on more than one occasion what great neighbors that they tend to be and that they intend to be. Especially when in regards to, you know, their tenure while on the site, as far as deliveries and traffic patterns and things, anything that we've discussed. I mean, it would be a really great show towards that to actually get in during construction and take the neighbors' consideration for those Saturday hours seriously and either eliminate the Saturday construction, I understand that would prolong, any hour removed would prolong the overall time of the project. But the elimination of the Saturday, or even a half-day of a Saturday, or something like a nine to two, you know, as far as good faith and building of relationships within this neighborhood, that would be, I would say, a significant step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine. Yes.
Again, Jeter on town meeting number, please, at 9, 120 Highland Street. In the email I got today from you, Ned, on this construction plan, it spoke of invasive plants, remediation, and it said.
It's in there, it's in there, yeah. Appropriate remediation, it's in, it's. Well, it's not in the email, it's actually in the construction management plan itself.
Oh, construction management, thank you, Bard. And I'm wondering, all along Highland Street, it's all Japanese knotweed, it goes in about 20 feet. It runs the width of the property, I don't know how wide that is, I'm guessing 600 feet. And when you talk about screening, right now, the Japanese knotweed is the screen. And when I first moved into our house there at 120, oh, 15 years ago, there was tremendous screening, and all the trees are dying from the Japanese knotweed. If you go up to the Cardy's house, past my house, headed towards Randolph Avenue, Route 28, you'll see magnificent old growth trees all the way up, out to Randolph Avenue. But the entire stretch of this hospital property, and I say we've been complaining for 15 years about this knotweed, is there. Now, we're thinking, if you excavate it, which is one way of getting it out, I have no idea what the remediation plan is, we think you're probably going to need a retaining wall behind Highland Street itself. And again, that's going to further complicate the traffic along that stretch. As I say, we contend all along that the road is just simply too narrow for this project. In addition, you're talking about a sewer line, we still don't know where that's going. Is that going to come out of Highland Street and down Stafford? What's going on with that? So I'd love to know, has there been an order of conditions yet with invasive species?
No, we started the hearing with the Conservation Commission last week. We haven't closed that hearing.
That will be something, and there will be a meeting on April 11th where they will be the.
But my point is, this is not, is not a new issue with the hospital.
No.
And it's gone back 15 years to Crystal Martin, who's long deceased. And the, it's been raised over the course of the last two and a half years, unless it must still go closer to, that what we decided, thank you.
No, thank you, excellent.
Conservation Commission requested a mapping of the location of all invasive species. And that's been developed.
Right.
Roger Allen from EcoTech, who was our guy, he was out there today doing a couple of things. One is mapping the locations of invasive species, and the second is he was identifying, marking trees that all along that edge of the limit of work and approximate the limits of work so to develop, help us further advance the tree preservation plan. I know that's something that Cheryl specifically asked for last week, he was out, he was out there today for most of the day doing that. So it's a deliverable on the invasive species side, we owe to the Conservation Commission for the continuing hearing on the 11th of April, and we'll share obviously the same materials with the board and with the neighbors when they're ready.
Great, okay.
But the, specifically speaking, the invasors that are within, that are along the edge of Highland Street are outside of the scope of this contracted work. Because they are, there is no work other than at the site entry that would be done by the contractor.
Okay. It is in the construction management plan, so, yeah.
Certainly, up the street from the new driveway entrance, all of that frontage will remain the same unless there's an improved plan with the Conservation Commission to address. The Japanese knotweed that's along that front, that's up to us to develop a plan.
That's great, okay. We would like to, yeah, be CC'd on that when you have that, that would be great. Okay, and welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself and your name and address?
Sure. My name is Anthony Nowells, I live on 179 Highland Street. And my concern is with compliance, in the traffic report, 30% of the traffic going down the upper Highland roads are truck use. And with the hospital not observing that compliance of not, trucks not using Upper Stafford and Buckingham, will the new implementation better that compliance, or how will that be enforced?
I think we're going to do a really good job about controlling anybody leaving the site because they will have already come to us. There's going to be a sign when you leave the site that says left turn only. So they shouldn't be able to, they shouldn't make a right, there'll be a camera there if they do make a right. But our people on site will be able to tell them, make sure when you go out, you make a left. So a little bit of the people coming to the site, we may not have a chance to catch them before they get there. But once they're on site, I feel pretty good we can get them to make a left.
So before they come to the site, in the, in the plan, it's that they don't use Waze or certain GPS mapping services. And so there's multiple steps of compliance before they come to your facility. So there's not using Waze, there's not using Stafford or Buckingham. And then once you get to the facility, there's certain traffic management in the facility. And once they leave the facility, washing the vehicles or tracking the vehicles before they leave so they don't track invasive species, and then a left-hand turn. So there's all these steps of compliance, and before they get to your facility, there's multiple steps of what these truck drivers, what their drivers will have to do. And that's just, that's my concern for residents who do live on Stafford.
It is a challenge, and like I think I started out saying, you know, somebody's going to go down all the roads, but it shouldn't be a regular occurrence.
It's a 30% occurrence.
It won't be 30% with us, I don't know if it's 30% with somebody. You're going to get a road.
That's the judgment report, yeah.
Yeah, it won't be 30% of our people going the wrong way, it might be, I don't know, one or two out of 100. It won't be the daily workers, it'll be one delivery truck that didn't get the message. We can control our workers, they'll understand the program and how to implement it, but we do this a lot and we do get a road truck driver that just didn't know. Makes an honest mistake, turns on the wrong road, but it's not 30% of the staff who are doing that. I know that for a fact, just from experience of doing this in different towns and cities.
Okay. In the traffic report that was conducted, 30% of trucks use those, these two roads.
Yeah, but those trucks are not.
From Highland, from the old hospital. Well, where are the facility, are they going to, from hospital?
Well, they, they could be coming from up Canton Avenue, taking the right, going up the Highland.
Sure they could, but there's ground trucks, which are uniform delivery trucks.
We understand that, and we're encouraging the hospital to do things like put a camera in at their exit and do more to try and enforce what happens with their deliveries, but that's.
Well, I think, I think that's a good start.
That, you know, we can't control, so we can't control what happens at the hospital, and encourage the hospital to do what hospitals should do. And I know they're taking steps to advance that, but we just did, in light of this recommendation for surveillance camera here, we, today, recommended the same, the use of a similar camera at their Highland Street exit so that they can do a better job of monitoring what happens.
And once the monitoring does happen, what sort of enforcement will be made? Will, will drivers be ticketed, will they be marched on their record to come to the facility, or how is?
If they turn into our site, we'll have their license plate number in the car, we'll talk to them, and if they do it again, we'll find them. And if they do it again, we'll just throw them off the job. I mean, we can control who comes in here, I can't control the hospital, but maybe these sites should say no non-residential traffic.
There is one, yeah.
No construction traffic, I mean, because this says no construction traffic, but if you're having that type of an issue, maybe it's just a big sign, no non-residential traffic. And like I said, we can monitor our driveway, I can't, I can't tell everybody that's going on Highland, but I can tell people that are pulling it out of our site, so we have control over that. We, we'll have all of a picture, we'll have a car on site, so that's easy to manage.
Bard, is there a no-truck sign on top of your road, or?
No, we, we did.
There is on Highland, I saw it around, around Highland.
Thank you so much. Bardai Rezai, 11 Stafford Road again. Yeah, I think we had, we'd spoken at Chase Berkeley of the DPW about the no-trucks thing, and I guess it's a, it's a, it's a, the state controls it, and we don't currently have it on the ladder streets because you have to meet some criteria of, and I think we do actually, a certain percentage of traffic has to be commercial that you want to limit, and that the street has to be thickly settled, which it is, and it has to be narrow such that the traffic could be detrimental to the street. So I think we do meet those conditions to get the no-truck signs on the ladder streets, particularly Stafford. But I think it's something that the town has to apply for through the state, is what my understanding, and then, you know. But Highland has no trucks, but I think Tim explained to us in one of these meetings that that pertains to traffic that's cutting through, but if you're making a delivery, technically you're allowed to use Highland, which, you know, obviously we don't want that to have to happen, but, you know, here we are. The other thing, the comment on the no residential traffic, I think that would be, you know, we've been asking for that, I'm sorry, yeah, no.
Non-residential.
You know, we've been asking for stuff like that, it's one of the recommendations in the mass Route 28 corridor studies to calm, cut through traffic on all the side streets, is to limit it to residents only, not just on our streets, but other streets off of 28. So we, you know, we're in support of that for sure. And then I think just to clarify, the comment on the 30%, you know, not coming from you guys, but on the Van Ness traffic report that Northbridge commissioned, they found it on Buckingham in particular, I think it was 30% of the volume on Buckingham's trucks. And so that's kind of, you know, astounding when you think about it. So I think, you know, we're dealing with an existing conditions problem, and now we're talking about adding this on top of. talking about adding this on top of that. So I think that's why the concern is so high.
So just to your enforcement issue, so a special permit will be issued, so then the enforcement agent is the building inspector. So you can call Joe Prondak and tell him that a, there has been a violation, and then he would go out to the site and talk with the, the applicant. And then if it's a repeated offense, then, then he could, you know, somehow condition them or fine them. So just being in touch with the building inspector is a way to help with enforcement.
If I could, I guess in the interest of, of being considerate of Joe Prondak, the applicant has hired a very good construction firm. You guys are a class organization. You have the ability to create an enforcement mechanism and to drive the accountability right down to the level of the subcontractor. And I think in the interest of, you've heard plenty of the neighbors' frustration with their existing condition, they just, not only do they wanna improve the existing condition, they don't want your period of time in the neighborhood to make it worse. But I think if you could develop an enforcement policy that Erland would be willing, you know, to enforce, it would give the neighbors some sense of hope that their situation wouldn't be worse, Eric, during your period of construction. I'm familiar with the process, just as you are, of creating a fine mechanism. And if the person violates the fine, and typically what subcontractors do, they make that fine a responsibility of the individual that violated. So when a worker knows that he's gonna pay a hundred dollars for every time he takes a, a left instead of a right, or a right instead of a left, or uses a street he shouldn't, you know, that behavior ends pretty quickly. But that really is gonna be dependent on your team being willing. And that's something, maybe I think it'd be good if you could identify your enforcement policy and how you would attend, how you would intend to hold the subcontractors accountable to it.
Yep, we can certainly do that shot, not a problem.
Great.
So we've done that under the jobs.
Meredith, we've got a hand up on the Zoom.
Yes, if you'd like to introduce yourself and welcome.
Hi again, I'm Nadine Hannah, eleven Spafford Road. I just wanna speak back to the, the point, particularly about the existing condition. And as much as we understand that North Bridge, neither North Bridge nor any extension parties that are using for this project are Milton Hospital, they have on more than one occasion Milton Hospital and North Bridge used the hospital's current protocol for not using Spafford Road or the latter streets as an example of what North Bridge will be using going forward. And, and as it's been stated multiple times, that's not working now. So it's not working now, and I don't believe that the only exception is going to be a one-off truck coming in from Canada. I don't think any of my neighbors believe that. I don't think anyone sitting at that table believes that. And we would really appreciate it if we could continue this conversation with a more pointed direction towards the fact that these things are going to happen, and that is going to be the condition with which approving this project creates for our neighborhoods we live in moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine. Any other hands up? We can't see in the audience?
Nope.
Gene Erland, one twenty-nine, two. Again, I wanna insist that this board request the sweat path analysis. I can cite the ruling as a, say a CMR five twenty-seven eighteen point one, point one, point four, and specifically calls for software simulation. I say we patiently been waiting for a year and a half, and I say we don't think the twenty-two feet's gonna work. We've been saying it over and over and over, and it's the obligation of the applicants to prove it, if it works. And the Maggie Ofield was kind enough to say, hey, you know, in this day and age with limited supply chain issues, you're gonna get more likely bigger trucks. And she asked for the biggest trucks, and it's been ignored, and they didn't cover this entrance at all. And where they did cover it in front of the front door, they showed the fire truck having to back up like three times to make a turn. In the eventual emergency, that's just not fair, not right. I mean, we have snow issues and stuff like that that would further complicate things. So I beg this board a year and a half later to insist, and do we have a firm date? I don't wanna keep coming to these meetings unless I know that they can actually get a vehicle in there in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will be discussing that, we just, tonight we're just staying just on this specific topic, but that will be a point of discussion, certainly. Okay, with that, I think we can move to the discussion of the tree plan.
Meredith, we've got, we've got a hand up on the Zoom.
Oh, I'm, sorry, all right, one more question, and then we'll, we need to move on. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, this is Sharon Rich, forty-three Spafford Road. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and really all I wanted to say is, I am sitting here silently listening, and I just want to be heard that the Rich household agrees and has the same exact concerns as all of our neighbors have spoken to this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Right, tree plan?
Okay, we do a brief overview of the tree preservation plan that was drafted. It's essentially the plan that was drafted for Walcott Woods, modified a little bit to address the more specifics of this project. It does need to be updated and married to the plan that, with a certain specific survey of the trees that are within, bullseye, if you will, that certainly need protection. And that, that work was, additional work was happening today, because I said earlier, Arthur Allen was on site today, cataloging those trees, putting ribbons around those trees, specifically identifying them. They'll be re-surveyed on the, on the plan, and that plan will be married to the language that's here. So if there's any specific comments or questions about the language, we'd certainly love to hear if there are any adjustments made when we come back. But it's pretty straightforward, the perspective, how trees will be evaluated, there's a whole lot of trees that have come down.
Two seventy, I think. Two thirty-two.
Twenty-eight hundred inches of trees that are four inches or better. So we know that. And the goal is to limit completely the removal of trees to those that only, only those that have to be removed and cannot be saved without any end or any purpose. So the goal is to have a robust set of criteria as to when and how trees have to be identified, okay, protections need to be placed up to the drip lines, you know, protection for roots systems, no storage of materials on top of roots, no parking of vehicles, approximate to any trees. I think the plan relative to construction staging and parking is pretty clear that we can stay away from that, those, that area, but certainly those additional trees around, the limits of the back parking lot have to be identified in the plan. The plan has to, does account to them as well as all the trees that are up above towards the Cardy properties and along the edges of the tree, the non-estruck lines as well.
So we will be getting that. Cheryl, I see you have your hand up on this topic.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Ned, for using Walcott Woods as your template. I think we spent a lot of time in permitting the Walcott Woods project on this particular topic, and I think it's a, it's definitely a good, it's an important document. I did, you asked about comments in particular, there was, I don't see a page number, but I think it's page three, under section four, execution, protection of existing vegetation, bullet point four, the, the required temporary fencing shall be installed wherever possible at the drip line, and then it goes on. The term wherever possible is not one that's very enforceable. And so I think, you know, what a contractor might think is possible and what we might hope is possible may not align. But I think if we can get that sticked or agreed to at the outset, and maybe that's with the planning director, and maybe that goes into a decision, but I think we need to think about that term wherever possible.
Sure, and I know that the planning calls for an arborist to monitor, would we wanna have an arborist agree and certify that the location of the, of the fencing is appropriate? We could certainly add something here that would add an arborist oversight of the, of the location of fencing.
Yeah, so I think that would be good. You know, the, the development near St. Pius, I keep forgetting the name of that development, Ned, help me out.
Woodmere.
Woodmere, thanks. Woodmere, we identified trees that were definitely going to be saved, and that trees that were, would be attempted to be saved, and those were clearly on the plan and clearly state that way, and I think that was a good way to do it. So I don't recall that we required an arborist for that project, but I think an arborist for this project in this site is a good move.
Yeah, I think with the last meeting, Mike Walrasak indicated that they'd met with Hartney-Grahamont, and Hartney-Grahamont was gonna be performing services, overseeing all the work being done, that it would have impact on trees.
Yeah, if I could, I, I echo Cheryl's sentiment on this topic, and I feel very strongly about this too. There are, there are certainly projects where commitments are made at this table, and by architects and engineers, and they're not fulfilled when it comes to building a project. And we recently had one that our board had to contend with, similar situation, a tree that was to be saved in the course of construction, it was damaged and lost. So I feel if enough work is done upfront, the commitment that may, that is made, Ned, can be fulfilled. But I think it would not be a good situation if, as Cheryl said, that language is quite loose. I think we should move away from loose language and get definitive on what is gonna be saved and what's not gonna be saved, and, and make sure that the contractor knows what they're responsible for doing.
We'll, we'll work on some type of language for this.
And I'm Mike Walrasak of North Bridge, and when, when we say, when I say we're gonna save some trees, we're gonna try to save the trees, and when I say try, we, we work with you and we define the protection area, and then we're gonna hire an independent company, and I committed this to the last, that's the last meeting, and I'll recommit it now to, to watch over on a, at least a weekly basis, and work with the contractor to make sure that tree save areas are kept up, that there are places in the, in the report that says you're supposed to have two, two layers of seven, eight, three quarter inch plywood in certain areas, that that is all, you know, we plan on implementing an enforceable check and balance to make sure that those steps are properly taken. And throughout, as long as that, that tree save area has to be kept up.
So I have a question that says that all the plants will be guaranteed for one year following the date of installation. So what happens if in two years or three years' time, there's loss? I think one year's probably not significant enough time.
That's in the, in the last section, 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 landscape planting?
Yeah, yeah. And then also, when you're doing your tree survey, can you do it by species as well?
He was identifying.
Because the removal of two hundred and thirty-two trees is really very significant. And it would be, you had said last week that there would be a sizable check coming to the town for loss of trees. But I made a, you know, a few phone calls, and a seven-inch tree today is around, it would retail for about thirty-three hundred dollars. Six-inch tree would retail for about three thousand dollars. So when you look at your, the, the tree diameter, you know, there's quite a bit of trees, forty-two trees that are eight inches, twenty-eight trees, ten inches. So they're significant sized trees, they're just not little understory saplings that are being removed. They're really quite significant. So I'm also wondering if it's possible, if you could save any of the trees and bring in a tree spade, spade them up, and then plant them elsewhere on the property, especially out front, where maybe there could be some areas that might need some trees planted just to minimize the impact of, of the building on the neighborhood.
We can certainly take a look at whether that's possible, and see what we can do. I know that we talked last week about the protections for planting trees within the neighborhood as part of the tree replication program, and we're certainly wide open to doing that. We are looking at, you know, we can, we can look at this issue of relocating trees that can be relocated and putting them down toward the one oh seven Highland, the area where we're doing some wetland replication, and some other flood plans forwards, that that might be an area where we could include some of those trees.
And just an example, I'm just finishing up a community in Marblehead, Mass, and a neighbor offered to us six mature maples, and we were, and we were taking a spade and actually moving them. So we have some experience in this, and if we see a particularly nice tree in among them, and there is a place for it, you know, I'd much rather take it from our own, from our own. So we'll look at that.
Mike, your, your commitment means an awful lot, you know, when you and your role makes the commitment that you're making to what you said to do as you say you will do. The reality is, reality of it is that you're not the one laying down the plywood, you're not the one that has to do the extra effort, so that what you hope will, will be the outcome is the outcome. So...
I understand it, but my job is to, I put people in that place to watch, be my eyes and ears and, and do that. I've been in this industry, specifically developing assisted living for twenty-five years, and if you check me out, you will find, I worked for, worked for Benchmark Senior Living for fifteen years, I worked for Atria Senior Living as their East Coast developer, and now I'm with North Bridge. If you can go anywhere, and this industry that we're in is a local industry, it's a, you know, the people that work there, the people that live there, live in the town, it's crucial that, that this industry is represented by people that try to do what they say, and, and, you know, say what you mean and do what you say. So, you know, all I can say is, is, is what my record is, and I will, you know, do my diligence to make sure that if we commit to something, it's done the way we commit.
I'm not questioning your ability, your experience, or your commitment. I'm only asking that when you put forth the, the commitment that you've made, that as it moves down the line to Eric's team or anybody else, that there's an enforcement mechanism so they understand the commitment that you made and they do so. That's it, that's it. So you figure out how that happens, what enforcement. I spoke earlier about traffic enforcement and how Eric could create a mechanism of penalties so that every worker would understand that if they don't follow the rules, there's a price to be paid for it. Same is true for tree protection, if a commitment's made to protect a tree, and it should only be made if there's a likelihood that it can be saved, right? We, we do not wanna make a commitment to saving a tree that there is no chance to save, and create an expectation that cannot be fulfilled. That would be bad. But when the expectation is established, then it's up to you and Erland and the team to create a mechanism of enforcement. That's all we're asking for.
You, you will get that from us.
There is a provision in... There is a provision in the plan that says that any tree that's removed, it shouldn't have been removed, is a $300 per caliber inch fine associated with that. So if you get a significant tree that's 30 inches, it's removed, or it dies, there's a significant penalty.
Yeah, you and I both know that $300 an inch is pennies compared to the value of a tree that's gone.
Understood, no question.
Yeah, so, you know, the compensation as a result of something that happens is really not fair replacement, so.
Understood. We'll take a.
Yeah, I.
Drafting tighter.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it, Ned. I mean, I work in the same environment that Eric works, and I know how hard it is to get people to do things that, you know, that are often difficult in the course of doing their work. So I get it, it's not easy, Mike, and when you're sitting, make the commitment that you're making, I know it's not easy to deliver it, so I appreciate it. And all I'm saying is if you create some enforcement that will really hold people accountable, you have a better chance of getting the result that you want.
Well, the documents will be part of the contract documents we have with Erland, and I think just the quality, you're in the industry, and you know, I mean, this is a great company, and they haven't, they've done work for us before. In fact, probably the project we had the least problems with in the past was working with Erland. And so it starts with the quality of the people you bring in, and from that point on, we're going to tie the contract documents, which include all our approvals and the orders of conditions and everything in there, and by contract, we're going to be tied with them. But you know what? Working with these guys, I don't think we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to worry about that because it's going to get bad.
Also, I just was wondering how the plan, and this is more than Ned, meets our, like the climate resiliency plan of the town. So, you know, we've got a new committee in town, so I'm just wondering, maybe you could look, you know, go through it with Tim or Mira to see how it's meeting our sustainability. And our master plan states that we should maintain and preserve our woodlands and our open spaces. So, you know, it's a significant change to the neighborhood, and we now know that change happens, but clear cutting a wooded lot is very traumatic, not just to the neighbors but to all of us in town. We get used to our town looking a certain way, and when one neighborhood suffers a blow, we kind of look around the rest of our town and see how is that going to affect the rest of us. So we're kind of protective of each of our neighborhoods, and we just want to make sure that these neighbors are cared for and are listened to, and we're slowly losing all of our trees in our woodland areas, and we're just very sensitive to that. So the least destruction of the property is what we're looking for.
All right. Are there any hands up to speak to the tree plan? Anyone? Any specifics? As we know, it's not complete yet, it will be updated, but if there are members of the public who would like to speak to the tree plan specifically, yes.
So I brought up last week that where the lorry dock is, that's really close to wetlands, so it doesn't look like they're even building any or planting anything right there.
Meredith, can we have this person say their name and address for the red?
Yes, she's earlier, sorry. Teresa O'Brien, Boychus Spafford. So it's on the corner of Spafford and Highland, so like when I sit on my deck, I can look straight across through all these trees. And right where the wetlands are, and I don't think they can build right there, they're saying the driveway where the deliveries is, they're backing down there, so we have a clear view of the deliveries and the dumpsters. I took a picture of my dog in the yard today, I'd love to show you guys, but the trees right now, there is nothing. We'll have a clear view of all the deliveries. So they're getting out, walking behind the building. Ideally, it'd be great if they could move where the deliveries go, but at least put trees there. There's no trees, nothing on that path because they said it's too close to wetlands to build or plant trees. So it'd just be nice for a barrier for the neighborhood, we're all concerned about the traffic. But now we're driving up and we'll be able to see right through.
I'll tell you what, on the day of the sidewalk, will you be in the sidewalk?
Yeah, I'll be there.
We will prepare a plan to show you maybe a little bit better because, wait, with the pocket there, it is where the dumpster, and the dumpster, which is surrounded by a fence, and the generator, which is, you know, we can screen, will make it so you're not going to see the area of the, you know, our loading area.
Yeah.
And if we needed to.
But the loading area also looks like you have to walk around the building, so the deliveries, doesn't look like it goes in right there. Do they walk around the building to, I couldn't see the door on.
Oh, that's good, right, there's a door right.
Okay, wasn't quite clear, okay.
Yeah, that walk is just, you know, occasional if someone needs to evacuate the back.
Okay, and the plan I was looking at looked like they walked around.
Yeah, no.
To the big rear door.
No, no. And, but we'll show you that, and if we needed to plant a couple of trees there to provide you, you know, in back to.
Yeah, because that whole driveway doesn't look like there's any trees planted.
The driveway is up.
It goes down, but it doesn't look like there's any trees being planted on that driveway.
But there are walls on either side of that driveway because of the unique, you know, how we had to do this and site the building and so forth. So when you're walking in that driveway, you're going to be looking down, down at the dumpster. So anyways, we'll take a detailed plan and show you.
Just because, I can tell you, all those trees in the beginning, they're just dead, there's nothing, and we'll just be looking at the building. So it'd just be nice to get something else around that side of the building.
And we did talk about, there will be a check written to the town for remediation for the loss of the trees, but one of the things that we were talking about at the last meeting was actually working with Chase Berkeley, the DPW, and maybe adding some trees along the street, which could maybe help you on the other side, on the Spafford side, to buffer some of the neighbors.
Yes, it's only right on Highland.
Yeah, so that's something that we'll definitely be thinking about too, so, yeah, thank you.
And if, when we go in and remove that knotweed, Jean mentioned that, oh, you can't just leave it like that, our plan, and we couldn't just leave it like that, there'll be some additional plantings that we're going to have to do in place of that.
Which would be great, yeah.
To make sure that the, so that could provide some additional screening.
Yeah.
We have a limited area there that's not in the wetlands, so we can't go and, we've got to respect that, we can't be digging around in the wetlands.
Right.
But there is some areas that are in the wetlands that.
That would be great.
Some of the knotweeds.
Yeah, we may be able to think about planting within the 25-foot, non-disturbed line between the wetlands.
On the street.
25 feet available to a certain.
I'll tell you, if you're standing on Highland, you're looking down, there's a bank in some places, you can go beyond that bank and you're in.
In the wetlands, I'm talking about coming back up to the side.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There's a 25-foot wide non-disturbed zone that the Conservation Commission could allow additional plantings to take place, and maybe some of the relocation of trees can happen in that area. Yeah, that's something we can do.
And we can look at it on the sidewalk on April 1st too, that's great.
Meredith, we've got a hand up in the zoo?
Yes, welcome, if you can introduce yourself, please.
Hi, Nadine Hannah, 11 Spafford Road. I just wanted to speak specifically to the line against Highland Road, front facing the street. It is certainly the opinion of the neighborhood that all the knotweed be removed and replaced with evergreen shrubs and multi-layered to act to, to prevent as much as possible for the neighborhood to see this building, the comings and goings, the deliveries, the garbage vehicles, you know, sure, the dumpsters will have a fence, but the garbage truck is going to be backing all the way back in there. And as Maggie had said, the aesthetic of the neighborhood is seriously going to be damaged, and we do think that the tree plan needs significant addition and improvement.
Thank you. Okay.
Would you further involve any suggestions that people have about particular plantings?
Yeah, if I could, Bart, I'm Ruth, I love Spafford Road, just two minutes, I won't take any more of your time, but no, I think the suggestions are great, that I think we should look at right along the road because besides the screen and aesthetics, the real practical thing we're facing and is we're valid knotweed throughout the neighborhood is if you don't plant something in its place, any, a tiny little root fragment, it'll regenerate, and it's unbelievable how it regenerates so quickly. So the way to keep it from coming back is you need to have something compete and shade it because it doesn't like deep shade. So that's, there's two benefits to planting along the road. It would be great to be able to plant from the other side, but I, just from the walks that we do, that sidewalk on Highland is just so narrow, there's just really not much room there, so I would, I would just, you know, definitely we should look at it, but I think we're going to have a hard time with where, you know, people's, you know, the front lawn and the driveway, the sidewalks may only be like four feet, three, four feet, it's like, they're really, really tight, so I don't know if the town would say, we can't put a tree here because now you block the sidewalks, you know. And then, on saving trees, I think I mentioned last time, there are a couple of really gorgeous American Beech Heritage trees that, that just my personal opinion is, those are the hardest ones to replace, you know, the red maples, the river birch, like, you know, you can find, you can find those and they grow fast, and some of those other trees, that they, there's a few on the hospital properties from European Beech and American Beech that are, they're, you know, those are, those are lost. When I grew up in Quincy, one of them was planted by John Quincy Adams in our neighborhood and is still protected to this day. You know, I don't, not saying any of these trees are that significant, but that's, that's when some of them date from, you know, a couple hundred years, so, thank you.
For sure. Thank you, Bart. And welcome back in, Tamia.
Hi, Antonina Wells, 179 Highland Street. Highland Street is designated as a scenic road by the town of Milton, so I'd like to know the plan for maintaining it as a scenic road, besides planting the trees in front of whatever wall will be there. I share woods with the same land that is at 111 Highland Street, and I know the extensiveness of the wildlife that are there and the importance of the habitat, maintaining the habitat for those animals. So I'd like to also ask the question of how the habitat for the animals, maybe that's a better question for the Conservation Committee, but while we're speaking to the trees, all the extensive wildlife that is there.
I think, I think the, your boundary with the property is up in the back of the, of the tail of the property, right?
Yes, all those woods connect, yeah.
I know, so nothing's happening up in there.
All those woods connect.
I know that those woods up in the rear of the property aren't being touched.
All the woods connect.
The woods in the middle of the property are being destroyed.
Thank you.
I'm going to say that.
Thank you. Cheryl, you have your hand up.
Yes, Meredith, we have other agenda items, so I wanted to see if we can't move to continue this hearing to next week so that we have time for the next agenda items that we've been postponing for at least the last one or two meetings.
You know what? We currently have a lot on our agenda for next week, unfortunately, I just, and I would like to give the applicants a little bit more time. We, there's a lot of outstanding questions that I think we all know that are sort of around the water issue, sewer issue, and I think we need to give a little bit more time.
I've got it.
So you're looking for then the meeting of April 13th?
The 13th, yeah, would be the soonest that.
Sorry.
Is that, okay.
Okay, so would you take a motion to continue this hearing until that time?
I would, yes.
I have, before you move to calls, however, I do have a quick set of updates on some deliverables that we're working on, just to give you a heads up.
That would be, that would be great, if that's okay with the board, just a few minutes.
Also to remind you that the sidewalk with the Conservation Commission is a week from Saturday, April 1st. It'll be April 1st, 8:30 in the morning, and you should make sure that it holds that as a meeting.
Yep, Tim, you have that.
So.
Where's the meeting point for that, sorry, I'm sorry, where's the meeting point for that sidewalk?
Right at the main, at the driveway at 111 Highland Street.
Thank you.
People can come and park at 107 in the area that's been cleared. So we're working on a handful of things. First is that we're modifying the stormwater and the drainage. We did ask Tim to put a hold on review being done by Tetra Tech until that modification's done, which we, it's responsive to comments that we heard last week here as well as with the Conservation Commission, so there's some modifications to be made, and we thought before they get too deep into that review, that it would be appropriate for them to get, you know, and we expect to file that by the end of this week.
Okay, that's great.
So that work will be able to start. We have an updated memo responding to some comments we heard about traffic, and the traffic plan is being amended to include the surveillance camera that would be, not only the surveillance camera during the construction period that Erland will maintain, but they did separate, a new surveillance camera maintained by Northbridge to monitor daily safety.
That's great.
As I said, the.
Ned, will that be submitted next week too? Is that for submission?
That will be submitted following next week.
Okay.
On the 13th, not next week.
So you'll have it next week, and then time to review it.
Perfect.
In advance, so, that will go, that will also go to Tetra Tech because Tetra Tech, I mean, their specific task is to review stormwater and traffic.
Okay.
They said Arthur Allen was out cataloguing trees today, we're adjusting plans associated with it, modifying the tree preservation protection plan accordingly. The engineers met with DPW on Spafford Road last Thursday morning to, excuse me, this Tuesday morning, to look at both the condition and the capacity of the sewer line that we have submitted a report to Chase Berkeley for his review. It appears that they're, that the condition, that the sewer is in good condition and at this point of capacity to handle the additional flow that would come from us. There's a couple of conditions we think that Chase would impose as part of his review, and we're looking forward to getting that, and we'll, the amended plan will be, there'll be more detail provided to the board once we have, we see Chase's comments. We have a commitment now for a third shift parking, to all be parking proximate to the interior of the buildings, or the rear parking area will be dark, and there'll be a timer set on the lights in the rear so that it's consistently running off at the end of the second shift. And we are, as I said, we're also working on, Cheryl was very helpful in producing through Tim a written list of all of her comments, we've got that, and we're working on adjusting plans otherwise, and otherwise responsive to the questions and concerns of hubris, and then we've heard from the butters as well. So there'll be much more material coming in with plenty of time for review by you and your butters, everything we filed with you, we're filing copies of your butters, so it's going to be.
Great. Okay, thank you, and thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for the residents who've come out tonight as well. And with that, I would entertain a motion. Cheryl, would you like to repeat your motion to continue?
Excuse me, yes, I would like to move to continue the public hearing for 111 Highland Street Memory Care Facility to April 13th, and is 7:05 the time available, Tim?
You tell me, do you want to do this one first, or do you want to do the zoning public hearing first?
I'd say let's do the zoning public hearing first, so would this be 7:10 then?
That should work.
And that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, roll. Okay, roll call, Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you, nice, I know, yeah, thank you for coming, thank you for... Okay, so, back to number five, back to old business, bye, thank you. We can now move to the discussion for the RFP, for consultant services for East Milton mixed use zoning. And we have the four proposals before us. I know Tim asked for us to send in our, our comments. We did spend a lot of time, you know, when we first went through this, Maggie, you weren't here, but I think we can just maybe move through these and our, our comments on each a little more quickly. And we, I think if we start with, I think Weston Sampson, we had felt like they're an excellent firm, but for many reasons, maybe not the right firm for this project. But if we'd like to just start and, and I'd like, you know, just hear from the board on your thoughts on this, and if that's still the, the thinking of, of this board. Anyone like to start?
Well, in the, in the interest, I don't, if it's okay, I'll start?
Yes.
You know, in the interest of, I guess, managing the time that we have to speak about this tonight, and also utilizing, carrying forth some of the conversation from the meeting that we last spoke about this, I had, and I think as a group, we probably came down to two being the most, you know, probably the most, the best aligned in MAPC and UTEL. And I submitted to Tim at the conclusion of last week's meeting, the, you know, my assessment of the candidates, and in that assessment, I had indicated in my email to Tim that I thought MAPC, in my mind, was the preferred, the preferred consultant for this task. And, you know, I find that both UTEL and MAPC are excellent firms and, and deep in, in deep in experience and capability, but, you know, my take from MAPC is, there's a component of the community engagement that I think in MAPCs that I found to be stronger, more consistently written into their, into their response to the RFP, and where I think that is something that is going to be so important to have, you know, outreach effort and engaging the community. That was, that was considerable in my, in my assessment of them. And, and it seemed to me that, you know, the way that they wrote their response to the RFP, and certainly in the section that's referred to as the local understanding, they, I mean, there's a personalized response here to demonstrate their familiarity with the Town of Milton. You know, obviously, they have familiarity with the Town of Milton, and, and it reads through this, they mentioned, you know, the things that, to me, are really important, collaboration, sensitivity, again, their past experience with Milton. And, you know, on page, I'm not sure what page this is, this is under process, but, you know, this captured my attention, they mentioned robust public engagement is another critical component of a successful planning effort, and is detailed further below. So, you know, I liked not only the qualifications as a firm, but I also liked their commitment to, in my opinion, fulfill some of what we had expected of the firm. So I could talk on further, but I don't know that I necessarily need to, I guess at this point I'll, you know, I'll turn it over to others. You know, if I, the, the number of meetings, by the way, I guess this is my last comment, when I looked at their project schedule, you know, they have seven meetings within the structure of the project schedule, which I think allows us to accomplish, you know, what we hope to do, which would be, you know, a consensus, you know, from those that are the stakeholders, you know, the most important stakeholders. So I guess at that point I'll, I'll stop.
Okay. Does anyone else want to go first or next?
How do you do it?
Oh, yeah. Rich, did you want?
Oh, no, okay, all right.
Did you have your hand up? If I can, please.
Yeah, again, yeah, I don't have to, it's not long, I don't want to repeat everything, which concepts, but I agree with Sean, you know, we've used them before, so, you know, we kind of know what we're, we're getting, they've got experience here, I think they're thoughtful. I think I have the same top two as well, so I know the next, if I'm not mistaken, the next stage is that we, you know, once we kind of, I don't remember what you said, Tim, but at some point we see money at the dollars, and I don't know if that's going to change anything, but that's kind of where I'm at as well. So I would, yeah, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board to see if we're kind of all in the same spot.
Okay. Cheryl, you have your hand up?
Yes, I agree with Sean, we spoke at like, the last time we spoke about this at one of our meetings, and I had placed MAPC and UTEL in the, in the top. In using the spreadsheet that Tim provided us, I gave both of them highly advantageous in all of the criteria. So I came in thinking that perhaps we could look at the cost proposals and see if that would influence us in any way, but I, I think we would be well served to go with MAPC or with UTEL. And I agree with Sean about the familiarity with our community, and as Rich said, we've worked with them on a, on a couple of initiatives. They're also, I agree 100% about the way they spoke about their community engagement and the emphasis they have on that, even in their staffing and in the organization of their, organization. So that's, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Cheryl. And Maggie, do you want?
So I wasn't here at the other meeting, so I actually have a slightly different opinion. I liked, my top two would probably be MAPC and Goldson. And I know Goldson is a smaller firm, but I believe that sometimes smaller firms are actually more beneficial, because we would, could be a priority to them, we wouldn't just be just another client. I think that what I really liked about Jen Goldson was her, her undergrad was in historical preservation, so I kind of felt like she came to the table with a slightly different view, when I looked at some of the qualifications of others, like UTEO, I mean, they're all educated, there's no question about their education, but when you looked at UTEO, they all had, they all graduated from the same school. So I felt like there could not be, there might not be a diversity of thought, so I kind of like Goldson, just because they're smaller and they have a slightly different, they could have a slightly different perspective on things than some of the larger firms. MAPC, again, you know, they, they're, they're highly qualified, my only concern is in their public outreach and maybe this, I shouldn't even be saying this really, but in their, they just did the bike and pedestrian plan, and there was no outreach to the neighborhoods whatsoever, and maybe that wasn't in their scope of work, but they produced this bike and pedestrian plan, which we're going to be talking about, and they didn't reach out to any neighborhoods to see how that plan would impact us. MAPC is also, I feel kind of, sort of become a somewhat of a lobbying group for the developers in the state. You know, I get their emails and everything seems to be just pro-development, so I'm a little bit of afraid of that coming to East Milton, you know, what, what is their, what is their take on what East Milton is going to be like? I did like that they wanted to, that they wanted East Milton to be a welcoming neighborhood center with context-sensitive scale and high-quality design, that was, that was important. But I didn't like, they had a statement that they're, they wanted dimensional standards that support development in line with urban design. And, and, you know, I take, I, I, I want Milton to still remain a town, and so whenever I see the words urban, I just feel like the city is creeping out to us, and I'm trying to push back. And, you know, they, they quoted their, that they're like a form-based zoning, and like form-based zoning is more urbanist in design, which means more density, which means little or no setbacks. So that was just my feeling on MAPC, was they were, I'm a little afraid we're going to, East Milton is going to become a little bit more cookie cutter, like every other little village around town, around the state.
Okay, great. So I went back after our last meeting and just did a real deep dive back into all of these. And what I came, what I came out with was, my top two were JM Goldson and MAPC. JM Goldson, I don't think, and the reason why I sort of defend this firm and I really like this firm, they are the most experienced of all four applicants in writing zoning. Nobody else can compete with having Bob Mitchell with 40 years of writing zoning, and Laura wrote 68 articles, zoning articles while in Canton. The owner who would be the lead, the owner is, would be the lead, she was the previous town planner in Brookline and Newton. They have a community involvement specialist on the team. Dream is a very experienced architectural firm, I know Cheryl, you questioned that level, but I think they're a very strong firm. I was impressed with the images and graphics that they used in their samples, and I was impressed by the approach by Dream to have the goal of knitting together individual buildings into a cohesive form, creating an attractive public realm, because I think that's one of the key issues, is that having East Milton look like it's knitted together, and it's not a random set of buildings, which, with random architecture, that there is a look to the town, and that was one of the reasons actually, I actually like MAPC, is because they did a work creating zoning in an area where they did create a New England Village, it had a New England look to it, so having a vision. And I think that JM Goldson works in the most similar communities, similar to Milton, such as Brookline, Newton, Concord, Cohasset, Sudbury, Manchester by the Sea, Williamstown, and so forth. They also do use form-based zoning language, but they really, they have the skills to really write the zoning, because as we all know, at the end of the day, the zoning is the law, and that is what, what is going to be written, and the zoning is, is critical, because words do matter. The approach is balancing between change and preservation, which I really liked, and is sensitive to the neighborhood, and they, they do have an emphasis on community involvement. Also, I did like they referred to the Barrett Report in referencing the height of buildings and architecture. They had seemed to, JM Goldson seems to have a focus on listening and interaction with the community, viewing through the lens of historic preservation, and building off of what we like about East Milton, rather than simply focusing on the problems of East Milton. I thought their approach, I really liked, there's a lot of good things about East Milton, let's build on that, rather than strictly the problems. MAPC, when I, I did a real, I reread of this, and so I ended up, they actually tied. I did like that Josh has experience working in, on the Milton Village, an architect and a planner, Chris is very experienced with draft zoning. I put them actually second, as far as their, their staff and ability to, for zoning. Six, he's very experienced, but there, six of the last, in six zoning articles in the last five years have been adopted. I didn't think that was that many, but there is experience here. Sarah is very experienced with drafting zoning in Cambridge, so that was helpful. And Christian, obviously, is highly qualified community involvement specialist. I liked the economics and finance were referenced, because I think that's important. They did have mostly transit and urban focus in their experience. But I did like that MAPC would take inventory of existing buildings, hopefully with preservation in mind of the historic buildings, and they did do this with their Salem Street neck overlay zoning. I think they have strong visuals and the ability to create a cohesive and architecturally sensitive to design. And I was impressed by a few of the statements that they had made in their proposal, which I think really did, was really, showed an understanding of Milton. There was a data, they, one of the things I was impressed, a data-driven analysis and community-centered planning, because I think that's the key in what you alluded to, Sean, is the community involvement, and that this is a community-centered planning. This isn't a firm coming and telling us what we should be and, you know, how we can max out, you know, our, our development. Working with local stakeholders, that they said, and using creative approaches to build relationships with community members, I thought that was key. Studying the role of anchor businesses and institution, like the Food Center, and really understanding how these businesses meet our needs. The Milton Art Museum, for example, that, you know, that's something that we want to protect, embraces community challenges, indicating they would look for creative solutions. Importance of understanding context and defining elements in the area, because I think this is, context is what I'm really concerned with in our, in our zoning, that it fits in to Milton, it fits in to the neighborhood, the Butters in East Milton, that it, that it works. And, and that includes building, the building topology, architecture, and public realm that they referenced. MAPC also said they seemed, or they seem to bring a vision through their zoning and guidelines, knitting together new and old buildings. Rockport, I think the overall principles included maintaining community character. So I was pulling a lot of things that I thought we would want to apply, and that they would be able to do and implement. And then the vision, in the vision plan for North Situate Village Center, MAPC first confirmed the vision, so confirmed the vision with the community, and then developed the zoning language. A key aspect was ensuring commercial establishments were not displaced, again, we've talked about this in other current projects, displaced for all residential development. The code is organized around different building types with design requirements for each type. So they really are giving strong guidance for the design of the buildings that would be built. In Norfolk, the guidelines that they wrote are intended to improve the design quality for future investments in town center, to enhance visual character of the district and reflect its traditional New England heritage. Guidelines that guide the design to fit with the heritage of the town center and positively contribute to its future with the goal of contributing buildings of appropriate pedestrian scale and attractive architectural style that resonate with the context of neighboring properties in material, rhythm, proportion, color, and other design characteristics. So I, I really did see that there was a lot of good things that if we, in community planning... So I, I really did see that there was a lot of good things that if we, in community planning, were to reiterate, these are really important. The neighbors speak out, they're guided by the planning board on, on really what our goals and objectives are from the beginning. I think, I think we could have a really good plan. And I just, a few comments on UTIL because at a first glance, they're super impressive. Like I just, they've done a lot of big things, they've done a lot of things in Boston, impressive background of body of work, clearly strength in architecture. They're really sort of where I saw Goldson as being more strong in zoning. Clearly this is, their strength in architecture and planning, but it's not necessarily zoning. Tim's focus has been master planning in Boston. A major area of focus is urban design, urban planning and architecture. Used, they actually, and when I went through and looked at a lot of their projects, they actually used a planner and form-based code consultant, Dan Bartman, on a lot of his projects. So they weren't even doing zoning, they were outsourcing and had a, they had to hire a consultant to go out and write their zoning for them. So, which is not a bad thing, but it, obviously they felt that that was not a strength. And Dan Bartman was used to conceptualize and write zoning documents on, on many of the projects, sample projects they provided. Attorney Bob Browski, law practice is very impressive, but a majority of his resume has to do with re-cutification, which is interesting because that's something that we're going to be thinking about. Minimal amount of writing actual zoning, other than, you know, Concord where he was on the planning board and was probably the Alex White side to their town and was able to do things in-house. Tim Love, I found had minimal zoning experience. Again, I mentioned bringing consultant, very experienced in architecture and master planning. And the staff I found to be very new. It seems like it's a sort of a new firm. They work mostly in cities, fewer examples of similar towns. I found their approach to be more firm and rigid. The reader is told to limit our design guidelines to what the Barrett Report states, seems dismissive of the community engagement process and listening to the neighborhood. It refers to Milton as a city and it weighs transformation higher than what has actually appeared in the, in the survey in the Barrett Report. Graphics in form-based zoning in Newton, to me, their graphics seem fairly generic in architecture. MAPC was much more detailed, I think. Check-ins with staff frequently, but have a hands-off approach to their community involvement. That really struck me. They would not be leading the meetings, they would actually leave, leave Tim and Josh to actually lead those meetings, which, which they felt very hands-off. It would need to, to put more on our planning staff. The approach is focused on its, on our challenges of East Milton in a sense that they didn't really know Milton, but working from documents that we had provided. I'm just not sure if they are the best fit. Again, I think they focus on the problems in East Milton, but not necessarily knitting together a vision for East Milton using new and existing buildings. So, that was. Rich. And Rich, you already, he did speak.
He didn't, okay.
Yeah. I didn't know if he had his hand up again for anything.
Yeah, I did.
Sorry, I, because I, maybe Rich, because we can't see you, maybe that's.
We can't see.
While you're not showing up on the screen, I'm, I apologize because I just can't see.
Okay, don't worry about it. I just wanted to, can I talk? Or is that?
Yes.
All right. All right. I, I just, it, it sounds to me like all of us had MAPC as one of them. And, you know, a couple had, you know, the, the number two or the other one, there was a few, there was a couple different names there. And so, I mean, do we, can we move forward with that? I think we all, I mean, it seems like we're all agreeing on at least one of them. I'm not sure if those were all your first choices. But for me, I, I like, I like MAPC. I really, you, you know, you just went through a lot of points of theirs that we all did. I mean, I think they will do very well. I think most of these folks will do very well. I mean, we're gonna, well, not me, I probably won't be here, I won't be here. But you guys will be at the forefront of what they're doing and be able to lay out, you know, and guide them along the path. So I feel confident that the ones that we've been talking about would be good. I, I like that we all agree on MAPC. Now, I guess the question is, can we kind of make a motion and move forward with them?
Well, if I, if I could, I don't think, I don't want to speak for Maggie, but I think Goldson was your, was your preferred firm, not MAPC. You, you had both. And, and just in, in terms of Goldson, my point of view, Rich, and I, and I had, I had MAPC in my evaluation sheet as the highest. And, you know, in fact, when I look back at Goldson, because I feel like I, I owe this to Maggie because she has it as her preferred, I had them as not advantageous on the criteria on all of them, except for desirability of approach. And so, and, you know, again, in terms of, in terms of not advantageous or advantageous or highly advantageous, I agree to them by comparison to their competition. Do you know what I mean? That's the only way I could. So I, and I, I mean, the only reason I had not advantageous for them is because comparably, I found UTIL and MAPC to either be highly advantageous or advantageous in, in those particular criteria. But one of the concerns I have with Goldson, while I feel like we would have a very personalized approach because the owner of the firm is the person that's dedicated to the, to the particular project, they're very limited in resources, they don't have much staff. And obviously, they have Dream Collaborative to support them, but the, the resources that are in MAPC and also in UTIL, I think UTIL has at least 60 people, MAPC probably has over 100. MAPC has 21 different working groups, that's below the executive level. And, I mean, the, the depth as an organization is tremendous. I agree with what you said though, because they are a planning agency and there's a tendency then maybe for them to be more developer-oriented than oriented to what we want. However, my feeling is, we're the ones that have to control that. We're the ones, us as the board and the other stakeholders, the residents, the community of East Milton, who I hope is going to be engaged, it'll be our responsibility to make sure that they don't take what they might think. And I don't read that into the documents. I actually read that into UTIL's. I think, I, I saw exactly what you saw, UTIL was looking to Tim and Josh.
Right.
To be the leaders of generating the energy and, and that's not what MAP is seeing. And it's not Tim and Josh's, if we're, if we're bringing this firm in, it shouldn't be upon Tim and Josh, you know, to, to activate the, the process. It should be on the firm. But my, one of my big concerns with Goldson is that they're small. And, you know, they're one person away, in terms of that person not being in the firm, from not being able to fulfill the responsibilities. We'll never be in that situation with MAPC. I think we need to hire an organization that lines up with what we need them to do, but also one that lines up in terms of having the depth of the firm, that they're not, not so dependent on the handful of people in the firm. So that, that, size-wise, that was really a concern of mine with respect to JM Goldson.
Meredith, I have my hand up.
Yes, Cheryl. Sorry.
I would say, you know, I gave a lot of detail at our last meeting where we discussed this, I didn't want to repeat myself tonight, but I, I would say that I agree with Sean about Goldson, except that I did give them advantageous in a, in a number of places, I just didn't give them the highly advantageous. And one of the things that I mentioned that had concerned me before was that they didn't have a lot of examples of design guidelines. And the other was that the reference was, was really, really good for the, for Goldson herself, but the reference had said if she wasn't available, the, the staff that came after her, if you will, in terms of hierarchy, wasn't as good. And so that comes back to what Sean mentioned about the size of the firm. And so that's why I, I didn't put them as high. And then I just wanted to make a couple of comments about MAPC and a couple of the comments that were said before. I just want to make sure that the public realizes that MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, is our regional planning agency, which we, as a town, contribute funds to. And we have a representative on the board there, and that's Tabor Keeley, he's Milton's representative. And so if you want to learn more about, or give comments to Tabor about MAPC, I'm sure you could reach out to him. As far as the form-based zoning, that's actually a form of zoning that combines design guidelines into the zoning itself. So it's kind of like a hybrid of taking your design standards and your design guidelines and putting them into a graphic that is actually a standard. So that means it's not something that's discretionary, it's actually mandatory. So it's a higher, it's a more, actually a little more difficult form of zoning to write because it has to be very specific in terms of design characteristics. And so that is something where Milton Village, we kind of did a hybrid. Because of the drawings that I did to explain the design standards, we kind of ended up with something that people could understand. But that's the reason for form-based zoning. You put the graphic to zoning standards that otherwise are just words and numbers. So it's advantageous to think about that, I think. And then one other thing I'd like to just say about the bicycle pedestrian master plan. MAPC provided grant funding to prepare that plan and the Master Plan Implementation Committee provided some matching funds to, to, to allow that to happen. MAPC also provided grant funding for us for Milton Village work that they did and the town provided matching funds through, through the MPIC as well. And so we do benefit from working with them also on, in, in terms of a cost basis. But as far as the plan itself, you know, the scope of work was, was I think determined through the, through the planning department. It may not have included a public outreach as, a process as robust as some may have liked to have seen, but it did include a public outreach process that included a public survey and community, a public meeting. It did happen during COVID and so the outreach may have been restricted somewhat by that. And so I, I think where we should be prepared to make a recommendation tonight, I, I just wanted to ask Tim for clarification. If we think we're ready to make a recommendation, should we first, or what's the timing of opening the cost proposals?
The, the time is right, I think. I, I think the, the board has kind of said all it needs to say. You know, there's maybe not consensus quite yet, but I think there's, you know, a couple of firms that have kind of risen to the top. And, and I think looking at the prices will provide that final data point. So Cheryl and Rich, unfortunately, I'll, I'll see if I can dig up an electronic version. We have paper copies of these that are going to be distributed. But, and Julia, if you can do that, if you can pass those along to the members that are in the room right now.
Okay.
I will.
Thanks.
Read off for the benefit of the members that are remote and for the public.
Tim, could I make? Tim, could I make one more comment before you, before you get to that? Which, which I apologize for not saying it earlier. In terms of schedule, MAPC also has the shortest duration. They have a proposed duration of 12 months. And, and I, you know, from what I've seen, Weston Sampson was 14, UTIL was 14, and JM Goldson was 13. So at, at least in terms of duration. Now, I'm not sure that we would ever accept a firm that was a month shorter if we were dissatisfied with them as a candidate, right? But they do also happen to have the shortest duration in terms of schedule, if that's meaningful to the board. So, thanks, Tim. I just wanted to make sure I got that out there.
Certainly. Thank you, Sean. And, and I, I don't think that from a, from a budgetary perspective, that the timeline is really important, but just to, to sort of remind folks that the bulk of this is going to be paid out of a state planning assistance grant, which we need to have a deliverable for that ready at the end of fiscal '24. So it's a, it's a 24-month grant and then we're kind of approaching the end of fiscal '23. So again, I think all of this can get done within that timeframe, but it, it may be a slight consideration. So all of you should have, all of you in the room should have a price proposal, so I'll just read these.
So Tim, hold on, I have, I just have a question because we all sort of said, you know, MAPC, we were talking about as being our top, but we didn't say what was our second choice. And I'm only seeing UTIL here as the other, as the other one. So.
What do you mean the other one? There should be four price proposals.
I've just got, it looks like packets of two.
Can you double check?
Maybe they're all underneath. Oh, sorry. My apologies. It looked like there was two. Here, I should pass this.
Yeah, they're small, they're a little short.
Sorry, they're all there. Okay. Here, now this one has Sean, I don't know why this one, this must be something for your design.
The one that says Sean is supposed to go to Sean.
Okay. So my apologies, so it just, they were thin and they were in the back, so it just looked like two. So, okay.
So, so for, for the folks at home, the price proposal from MAPC is $59,000 and zero cents. The price proposal from Weston Sampson, $65,000 and zero cents. The price proposal from UTIL, $69,857 and zero cents. And the price proposal from Goldson, $74,994 and zero cents. So I, I hope everyone wrote those down if you're at home and if you're in the room, you've got those price proposals in front of you. So, so those are the, those are the data points and, and that's that.
Tim, I have a question. So they are required to stay within these budgets. We can't, you know, if we go with MAPC, they can't come back and say, well, the zoning is taking us longer than we expected, so it's going to be an incremental fee or these are absolute, this is the fine scope. And they're not going to come back and add, you know, we're maybe, and again, I, because JM Goldson is very experienced in zoning, they have a pretty big number of 36,000 on their zoning. You know, are, are we, I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples and, and somebody's not going to come back and say, well, we underestimated the time that was needed to, to write zoning guidelines, for example.
So, so that, that would be subject to, to, to the terms of the contract that the town eventually negotiates with whatever the chosen vendor is. You know, the planning board's role as the review and selection committee is to make a recommendation to the select board as to who to engage in a contract with. What I'll say is that it's not atypical for, for these things to be considered a not-to-achieve price. And I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing to, to kind of assert in a contract that, you know, this is what your proposal said and this is what the price is. So, you know, that's something that, you know, if the board has a concern about that, that, you know, that, that feedback can get to the select board and I think it would be well-received.
Cheryl, you have your hand up?
Tim, can you remind me the amount of the grant funding that we have available for this?
So we have $40,000 from a state planning assistance grant, which is sort of very kind of, you know, specifically related to, you know, the zoning project. We also have a $15,000 grant from the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, again, you know, for the zoning project, but I'll say fewer strings than, than the state grant in terms of, you know, reporting and reimbursement and things like that. And then obviously, there's a $10,000 match from the Master Plan Implementation Committee budget. So, you know, the, the money that we've effectively got in our hands for this project is $65,000. So, you know, the money that we've effectively gotten our hands for this project is $65,000. That's not to say that additional budgetary resources couldn't be Marshall, you know, to make up any difference if the board makes a certain choice.
Any other comments? Seems that MAPC is within our budget. The other's a little bit higher.
Yes, certainly, you know, I mean, I guess they happen to be the most competitive, right? Their number is $59,000. So they are the most competitive. And I don't think it's ironic that they also have the lowest of the hourly rates. When you look at their hourly rates, if we happened to go beyond the scope of services that we've outlined. But, and I don't know to what extent, at this point, you know, their financial component is to us. You know, I don't know if it's necessarily within our duty or not. You know, where, Tim can, maybe you could help me understand that. But it's good that the firm that all four of us had identified as, if not the preferred, one of the top two is also
Five of us.
Five of us, I apologize, is also the most competitive. So
Which is a good thing. That's helpful. I agree.
Yeah, and I'll just say, the procurement method that we use, you know, we use specifically, you know, to give the board the latitude to make other sort of non-price considerations, which is why we went through the whole exercise of talking about everything except the price. You know, it's always nice to have money left over, you know, in case you want to, you know, negotiate additional services or, you know, contract with somebody else. You know, but obviously, you know, we do have money available for most of these firms. But yeah, so you're, I think, you know, given the quality of all the responses and given sort of the prices, I think the board would be, you know, well within its rights to make any decision on any of these. I don't think anything is really crazy out of left field to consider, so.
Yeah, I would just add, I agree with Sean with the comments you made. I mean, the other thing I would mention is, you know, these folks seem to have some comparable experience, and they've also worked with us. So I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, responding to an RFP, you know, you know the client, and you know how to work with them, usually you can get more competitive. Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm kind of excited about this one. I mean, excited as you get. I mean, I like it. I think we've worked with them before. I know what we're getting. So I mean, I'm happy that the dollars came out the way they were, too. I understand, Tim, what you just said. You kind of don't have to go that route. And that's why you run the puzzle this way, so we don't see the pricing. But it is kind of nice that it worked out this way. We have money left over. We need it. So if folks are going to be interested in making a motion, I'd be, I'd be interested in seeing this.
Before we get to that, I did have a call from one of our residents. And I don't mind sharing, you know, and I told this resident that I would share this person's point of view. This person thought that an initial interview would be helpful, you know, before the firm is signed up. But most importantly, they'd like to see the firm selected in a kickoff meeting quickly. And this person said prior to the election, which I'm not sure if that's possible. But this person also said that the Neighborhood Association is preparing information to provide their opinion on expectations, which is great. That means that they're actively thinking about it and want to be part of the process.
That's great.
So it was an indication that they're anxious for and this is somebody from Rich's neighborhood, you know, the East Milton Square neighborhood. They're anxious for this decision to be made and for the process to start. That was the point that this person was driving at. Let's go. Let's go.
Yeah. I can agree with that. I'm sure that there's a lot of folks over here that way. You know, just, Sean, maybe you could talk a little bit more about the comment at the beginning. I don't know if you were just stating what they said or if you were agreeing with it. Like, talk a little bit more maybe about that interview piece. Because I think if, like you know, right, we've talked about if we interviewed, we'd have to interview everybody. So I think to get to the next step, I mean, Tim would have to say this. I don't know the rules. But I would imagine the rule is we probably have to, like, we probably have to vote on it so that we can then take them, bring them in and talk to them for real outside of the RFP, because it could be a little bit, is that right?
Yeah, I wasn't, I was only restating what this person had said.
Okay, that's what I think, yeah.
And this person had said that, you know, they thought initially an interview would be helpful. They did continue on and say, then they recognized that it might be more of a marketing-focused response. You bring somebody in for an interview, and they begin to tell you what they think you want to hear. So I don't think it was an expectation that this person had. It was just a comment that they had made as part of a series of comments, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I just want to make sure I didn't discount that. Because, yeah.
And I feel like we're not rushing this. I really feel like we have really thoroughly discussed these and have really looked, taken a deep dive, looking into who these firms are. And I feel very good, you know, about where we've come on consensus. I think this is a different scope of work for MAPC, which really includes community engagement. And I think that's where they've been short in the past. But in this, it would be addressed, and it would be strong, I think, there. And I think community engagement and community-based planning is just essential for this East Milton overlay.
So the last comment, I'm just looking back at my notes from this conversation with this resident. And the last statement that this resident made was, "If you like someone, please pick them." So, again, I think it's just an indication that they're anxious to get going.
Yeah. Yeah. So does the board feel like we want to have a motion put out there? Or are there any other, I guess maybe a motion, a second, and a discussion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend that the select board engage MAPC to do the zoning and design guidelines for East Milton Square.
Second.
Second? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I think we can take a vote on this.
Actually, one thing, Meredith, maybe what I should say is that and that the funds that be used to pay for this engagement be the grant funds secured by the planning department.
Great. And that friendly amendment is accepted, so. Okay, so that's good, Rich? Okay.
Yeah, second.
All right. So to vote, Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
So our, I believe that our standard contract was a part of the RFP package. So all of the respondents that MAPC included, you know, should be familiar with that. And we've contracted with them before. The next time that the select board meets is actually April 4th. So my instinct here is that should be plenty of time to kind of get things settled so that, you know, if and when the select board, you know, makes their vote and authorizes the town administrator to engage in negotiations and execute a contract, we should be able to get that kind of turned around relatively quickly after the 4th. So, you know, Sean, to the conversation with that resident, it'll be, we'll have to hustle, but I think we can get this thing kind of moving relatively quickly.
That's great.
That's great. Yeah, thank you. Terrific. Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item is the discussion for zoning articles for upcoming town meeting. Do you want to talk about the zoning recodification first, Tim?
Yes. So just let me grab a piece of paper that I had. We, the town clerk and I were at the warrant committee, I think it was last week. I feel so long ago, but it was only a week ago. We got in and out relative to some other articles that have been discussed at the warrant committee recently, which is nice. We, the warrant committee voted to recommend the two articles relative to the recodification, one being the zoning, the other being general bylaws, which was good. And I think that, I'm not going to speak for the warrant committee, but what I'll say, my instinct is, is that recommendation came on the back of the really limited scope of what this project actually is, just in terms of really just transporting the zoning from what we've got, which is in 50 different places, and just sort of putting it into one single location and reorganizing it in a way that is kind of consistent and user-friendly. The job of actually kind of poring through it, looking for the typos, looking for the sort of substantive content-based kind of inconsistency, actually making changes that we may want to make, that is not a part of this. And one thing that I want to, you know, part of the exercise of getting this thing out, you know, in relative kind of good amount of time before town meeting, is to give town meeting members, warrant committee members, a chance to sort of look through things. And we've already gotten some emails with some proposed corrections that I think, you know, we're sort of taking under advisement and, you know, we'll, I'm sure, hear more at the public hearing. But I just want to sort of read to you from a memo that we got from General Code outlining their process of how they get the sort of the raw material which we provide. And that is, you know, the certified copy of the zoning, accurate as to 2009, and then a true copy from the clerk's office of every zoning amendment since then, which, you know, come in sort of, you know, PDF form, and they're documents that you've got to read. The way that General Code does this, and, you know, they've done this in many, many towns, you know, elsewhere with great success and great satisfaction, is what they do is they take the raw material and they give it to two individual word processors who, again, individually transcribe that material into Microsoft Word. Those two copies are compared with each other to find inconsistencies. So, you know, someone typed, you know, "the," and the other person typed "ten." And, you know, that'll show up as an inconsistency. That inconsistency is then compared, not to each other, but to the original source material. So where two individuals kind of typing in, maybe one of them makes a mistake, that gets checked by the original, which I think is, you know, a really robust method. Again, that General Code has deployed with great success. You know, all of the sort of, any inconsistencies, any mistakes are kind of caught at the front end before they even get to us. So I think a lot of the things that, you know, as people are looking at this recodified version, the things that they're finding are, you know, mistakes that may have been in the zoning in the first place. And the example that I give is, they don't make changes to if there's a spelling error that's in the zoning, that spelling error is in the zoning. And that gets transcribed verbatim. And we'll have to go back at some other time and fix it if we do notice it. So the things that we're really looking at are, you know, the purpose of this project is to make sure that, you know, there's a new numbering system. And internal to the zoning, there are references to different sections. We need to make sure that all those references line up and are consistent to each other, because that's the thing that, you know, is really critical. So those are the types of things that, you know, we want town meeting members, we want, you know, members of the warrant committee, members of the bylaw review committee, members of the planning board to be on the lookout for. And so this is obviously a zoning article, so we'll need to have a public hearing. We talked about scheduling a public hearing for the 13th. Again, you know, this is an article of great interest to a lot of folks in town, so I'm sure we'll get some robust participation and discussion. But I think that, you know, again, you know, General Code, I think, has done a good job. And I think that it's going to be a really, it's going to be a new day in the town of Milton when you can just fire up, you know, eCode and look up the zoning. It's going to make everyone's job a lot easier.
Tim, can we invite Sue Galvin to that meeting on the 13th? Will she be, or is she planning to attend?
I told her that she should pencil it in, and now hopefully she can use ink on her calendar. So I'll let her know that we've scheduled that for the 13th.
And also the bylaw committee, I think they, Peter Mullin, if you could, you know, make sure he feels invited to that meeting, if he'd like to speak.
We'll do.
That would be great. And Alex, yeah. Cheryl, I see your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to use this time to ask Tim if the supplementary budget request went into the warrant committee and whether that, they've taken a vote on that budget, which would have included that supplemental, $40,000 for the next step in the recodification?
So I submitted that. I don't know if it's gone to the warrant committee yet. My conversations with the town administrator have led me to believe that it's a little bit of a long shot. Just, we're juggling a lot of things. But I'll get confirmation on that for the board. And then, you know, you all obviously can use that in your kind of budgetary considerations for the next fiscal year.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, great. So that'll be on the 13th. And then the lighting bylaw. Ellen Stoddard had come before us a few weeks ago now. And she had mentioned the Dark Sky compliant lighting organization in the Massachusetts, sort of the guidelines. And I, I'm sorry, she had sent it to me, and I'm not sure if I forwarded it to Tim or not. But Cheryl, you just sent it today to Tim, correct? I didn't open.
What I sent today to Tim was a link to the International Dark Sky Massachusetts Chapter website, which has a, I guess, a database, if you would, of the 57 towns, I believe it is, in Massachusetts that have a lighting bylaw. There you go. And I thought that it would be helpful to select at least a few of these to take a look at. The other thing that was, that I sent, which was an attachment in the email, is also from this website, which was a pretty useful checklist. So, for example, when we're looking at photometric plan or lighting, the photometric plan and the lighting cut sheets that go along with it, for example, like from the memory care application, we might be able to think about this, but also for, as well, the lighting bylaw because of some of the metrics that are here in terms of color temperature and so forth. So it might be, I think I may have suggested before, a small working group to work on this. I saw that Cambridge has a task force that worked on their lighting regulations. I haven't delved into it in great detail. I did look through the document that Ellen Stoddard sent. It's very detailed, and it has a lot of metrics that could be used. It also recommends different zones, different lighting zones. So, you know, if it's an area which is lightly populated, let's say, versus a more populated area, the recommendations for lighting levels are different. So I thought that was something to consider.
I think I'll send that out to everybody, what she sent, to make sure that people can, you know, have that to compare, and then some of the samples of other communities.
I think there was some interest in getting this done sooner rather than later. But it seems to me it's worth doing, the planning board doing a little more homework on this and preparing a bylaw, and maybe it's very similar to the bylaw that we And maybe it's very similar to the bylaw that we were handed by Aaron Bradley and Arthur Doyle from the Select Board. But when we sponsor zoning, I think we like to do our own due diligence on it. So I do plan to look into it a little further if anybody else wants to work on that with me. Be happy to share the work.
I will restate what I've said in the past on this, and I've probably said it more than once. I think the lighting bylaw can be a good bylaw for the town. But I do not, I do not support requiring people that have lighting in place, you know, to comply with it. I don't think that's, I don't think it's fair. I think as a comparison, when we change zoning in town, we don't go back to people that no longer comply with the new zoning and tell them that they now have to comply with the zoning. So it just seems to me that it's not, it's not the approach that, I will not support that approach. There is no way I'll support that approach. And if there are issues in the town with existing lighting that are problematic, I think we need to find a way to get to an amicable solution without creating a bylaw that requires our residents to, to be, I guess, managed in such a way.
And I would say before we move forward, it might be helpful if we had information from other town departments, specifically Joe Prodapp, because he is our code enforcement officer, and from John King, the police chief, because I know it's going to fall on their shoulders to enforce it. And even though Joe is the enforcement officer, my guess is most, most of these complaints will come at night when his office is not open. So then it would fall onto the police department. So it'd kind of be nice to know, to get their input before we spend a lot of time researching and coming up with things that we think would work when we really need help from them.
I'd also like to remind members that Ellen Stoddard, I believe, supplied a petition or a letter signed by a number of residents who were interested in seeing us take this up. Normally, we as a board are responsive to residents' requests to us to consider action. So I just want to remind folks that there, there is interest in this.
Yeah, thank you.
Meredith, can I?
Yes, please, Rich.
Yeah, just, I mean, this is going to take, this is going to be something that I imagine you folks are going to work on for a little while, or that'd be my suggestion. I agree with you, Cheryl. I think, you know, there's a lot of information out there. I mean, there's a lot of information across the country on this stuff. So there's a lot of standards out there. And I do think the town should, should put something forward. But I think we should, you know, take our time on it. I agree with you, Sean. You know, it just scares me to think that, you know, we change something and then, you know, you know, go after somebody. I'm sure there's things we can do though, like, and I don't know how appropriate this would be or how you'd do it, but I would imagine, you know, it doesn't mean a new law, we weren't going to go backwards on somebody. It doesn't mean they have like, for your aim to double down and like, you know, they started making changes to those lights, well, now they have to comply. It's kind of like, you know, once you've touched your fire, your sprinkler system, you need to comply with the new codes and you need to update the whole thing, right? And so I think it's, it could be something like that, right? I mean, lights burn out eventually and, you know, it probably means that once those things die, they probably have to be changed or something, or something like that.
Thank you. All right, yeah, so I think we'll continue to discuss this. This is something, but we want to do it the right way. So that's great. If there's nothing else, then I think we can move on. Tim, the MBTA communities, the update on the consultant work.
Yes, so we've gotten some preliminary work from UTIL, who is working with us through a grant from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership to, you know, basically start to run the state's compliance model, which is a very elaborate Excel and GIS-based tool to gauge the compliance of proposed districts. This is eventually going to be the method by which the Commonwealth judges whether a zoning district is compliant. And so it makes sense to use that tool to kind of continually test different iterations and different varieties of district geography and dimensional restrictions and things like that. So just to sort of get a baseline, and I'll continue to use that term, of what we're kind of dealing with. What I asked UTIL to do was to test the entire transit area, which is, as you all hopefully are familiar with, is the portion of the half-mile radius around Milton Station, Central Ave, Valley Road, Caden Street, and Matikan Station that are in town of Milton. And so rather than sort of, you know, come up with an arbitrary line and say, oh, test this district, I asked them to test everything. And then when you, when you're, when you're this big, you can start to kind of chip away at things. I also asked them to test, we had talked about kind of, you know, ideas for proposed districts. You know, one that I didn't get a ton of pushback on when we first brought it up was the sort of Granite Ave area around the State DPW yard and the Legion Hall. These are, you know, large non-residential parcels in areas where there's been, you know, a little bit of planning and discussion in the past. And so I thought that sort of testing those as a potential district would be a good idea. And then, you know, again, because, you know, we're early days, we're trying to set a baseline, we're trying to see, you know, what things look like and, you know, how they can contribute to, you know, our unit capacity number. I did ask them to test the East Milton Business District. You know, we are talking about zoning in East Milton right now. One thing that I found in my conversation with other town planners in the context of the reference checks that we did for, for the RFP process that we just talked about, was that there are a lot of towns that are kind of looking at their existing, you know, rezoning processes that are going on and really trying to latch on MBTA communities to those. Brookline, Newton, Situate, I had, I had long conversations with all those planners. And in each one of those communities, similar to Milton, they had a sort of unrelated zoning effort going on, you know, when the MBTA communities' guidelines came down the road. So I know we didn't talk, we kind of explicitly talked about not putting that in the scope of work. I wanted to see what it looked like and you all can kind of take it or leave it. You know, and we can kind of talk about other areas. But I do think, so what they did was, and the way that this model works, and I want to give you just a little bit of background to kind of set expectations for how the iteration on this work will happen, is, you know, basically you go into GIS, which is Geographic Information System. It's how we, you know, you've got little geographies, whether it's parcels or towns or whatever shapes. And you can kind of attach all sorts of information to those bits of geography in GIS. And so what you do is, the first step is, you kind of draw your district, right? And that captures all of the parcels in the GIS system. That information is stored in a spreadsheet form. That goes into the model. And so anything that you do in the model will affect all of those parcels that you've selected. So that's step one. Step two is, there's an opportunity to put in your sort of dimensional requirements. And we're all familiar with zoning dimensional requirements, height, setbacks, density, open space, parking, you know, et cetera. What I asked UTIL to do was put in the minimal amount of dimensional requirements that will kind of get us to a number that meets the unit capacity and kind of, you know, density minimum restrictions. And so, you know, because I didn't have a lot of, you know, feedback, that's why we're here talking tonight, is to get feedback on sort of further direction. You know, I didn't want to arbitrarily pick a height on behalf of everybody. I didn't want to arbitrarily pick setbacks. So, you know, what UTIL did was, and we'll see this in a minute, is, you know, really tried to hue as closely as possible to what the existing zoning requirements are. And they were able to do that in some cases and were not able to do that in other cases. One other thing about the compliance model that I think is really important to understand, and I think it's going to have significant effects on how we kind of proceed here, is, and it's important to understand this because this is the tool that DHCD is going to use to judge compliance, is that the model only looks at what we've got and it doesn't have the capabilities to sort of make assumptions that aren't reflected in reality. And that's a kind of a philosophical way of saying that we've got to deal with the partialization that we have. And that has an effect on minimum lot size. The zoning in the transit area, there are three different zoning districts. This significant portion of it is C-zone. There's a big element of a B-zone and then there's some A-zone. You know, and sort of the lot sizes in those areas kind of reflect those different zones. Now, that's the zoning. The actual reality on the ground, at least especially in the C, in the C portion of the transit area, is these are not 7,500-square-foot parcels. There are significant numbers of undersized parcels in that district. And one thing that UTIL was able to do, and I'm going to share some of the materials that they shared with me, let me just share my screen real quick, is they did an analysis of kind of what is the prevailing lot size in these districts. So I'm going to kind of zoom out just a little bit to show you on a map of what we're looking at. So what they were able to do is, so this is the transit area. So this kind of, you know, undulating line down here is the sort of half-mile radius lines from the transit stations. So the bluish-greenish sub-district is what is the C-zone of the transit area. And the yellow sub-district is the A and B zone. And you can kind of tell a little bit, you know, from the parcel sizes. You know, these are the sort of the bigger parcel districts, these are the smaller parcel districts. And so what they were able to do is, and let me kind of zoom out just a little bit, is figure out what is the prevailing lot size in these districts. And so looking at the C-zone right now, the median parcel size in the C-zone portion of the transit area is 7,053 square feet. So half of all of the parcels in that district, more than half, are undersized, under current zoning, under 7,500 square feet. The, you know, the average size is 10,151. I think that's capturing some pretty big parcels that maybe are not single-family house parcels. But you can kind of see the numbers here and these gradations go in increments of 1,000 square feet. So, you know, this line represents the median here and sort of as you get sort of bigger, you know, you start to see that, you know, the larger parcels become fewer in number here. So the way that we need to kind of think about this is, if we set a minimum lot size of, let's say, 10,000 square feet, that's only going to capture the parcels that are to the right of the little hand here. And the model is going to say, okay, these are all the parcels that could be redeveloped under a 10,000-foot minimum lot size zoning scheme. And depending on what the density and the other dimensional requirements, this is where we're going to judge what your unit capacity is. It's going to assume that the undersized parcels, you know, from 9,999 square feet downward to the left of where the hand is, are not buildable under a byright zoning scheme. And so it doesn't pretend that there could be lot consolidation. It doesn't assume that variances will be given. It's just saying, this is the existing partialization and this is how many things can be built byright, you know, on parcels that are appropriately sized. All of this is to say, and we can look at the yellow portion of the district now here too. This is the A and B zone kind of portion. The median lot size there is 25,422 square feet. You know, the average is 38,000. I don't know what this 400,000-square-foot parcel is, but it's a big boy. You know, again, so, you know, half of all of the parcels in this district are larger than 25,000 square feet. Half are smaller. So the reason why I asked them to sort of set up these sub-districts is because, you know, they're, they're very different, you know, in kind of physical character. And they're very different in terms of, you know, again, the existing partialization. You know, there's, there's, the likelihood of fitting significant density on a 7,000-square-foot parcel is much less than on a 40,000-square-foot parcel. And so these, these districts, you know, if, if we, you know, and again, I'm not making any presumptions here. It's really up to, you know, the planning board and eventually the town to kind of figure out what a district boundary is going to look like here. I didn't want to make any arbitrary judgments and say, you know, we're not including this portion or we're not including that portion. But if we were to do this whole area, you know, there would need to be a different consideration in terms of what the dimensional requirements would be in the blue zone versus the yellow zone. And that's just kind of a fact. The other thing, you know, like I said, I asked them to do this Granite Ave area where the Legion Hall and the State DPW yard are, and then just generally the East Milton, you know, Business District. Again, you know, we're already going through a zoning process there. You know, there may be, there may be ways to kind of merge the two efforts. So the results of all of this, and I'm going to, hold on a sec. Let me sort of zoom in here. So these are, these are the sort of dimensional standards and assumptions that UTIL put in. And so in the green zone, a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. In the yellow zone, a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. Two and a half stories, which is the existing max building height. They put in 10-foot setbacks all around. I don't think, I don't think that's going to be something that, you know, we'll want to refine that and probably have it reflect more of what the existing setback requirements are. We'll do those tests and see. One space per dwelling unit and then a maximum of three units per lot. And you've heard me say this before, that the minimum number of units to be considered multifamily housing is three. And in this transit area, which is so already densely developed and with such small lot sizes, it's really not, I don't think it's a great idea to be thinking about much more than three units per lot. You know, that being said, and we'll talk about this in a minute because we're going to see what some of the shortcomings are of where all this kind of shook out to. This is the, where did we, hold on a sec. Yeah, so what it spits out here is in that blue zone, if you do these dimensional requirements, you get 2,331 units in the blue zone and then 666 in the yellow zone. Maybe we'll want to adjust some of those, some of those dimensional requirements to get a better number there. But, you know, that spits out 2,907 units, which as we're probably all hopefully aware, you know, our unit capacity requirement is 2,461. So, you know, again, this is, this is the baseline. This is the biggest possible transit district with, you know, what I think are kind of the most reasonable minimum number of dimensional requirements. You know, setbacks aside, we'll want to talk about those. That gets us over the unit capacity number. But there's going to be a catch in a minute. They ran a similar exercise for the other two districts. This is one where there's going to want to be more refinement to get some better information about what the possibilities are here. You know, we may decide we just, we still want to just keep East Milton out of this and go on with the zoning exercise we're doing, which is fine. and go on with the zoning exercise we're doing, which is fine. But I think especially in, you know, the Granite Ave area, you know, they put in that same two-and-a-half-story, 10-foot setback, you know, one parking space, dimensional requirements. You know, I think next to the highway, backing up to the river, you know, there's a residential neighborhood there, but, you know, probably the area of town, you know, under consideration where there are the least number of residential butters, we may want to think about greater height and greater density in that Granite Ave portion. Again, to really kind of rack up, you know, as many numbers as we can. You know, so that's a, that's a refinement that we can ask UTIL to make. So the North District, which is that Granite Ave district that we talked about, under these, you know, relatively meager, you know, dimensional requirements, gets us 162 units. East Milton, 651 units. It's a little bit of a bigger district, there's more parcels, there's more opportunity there. You know, but again, you'd want to kind of fiddle with some of these dimensional requirements again. So we're already above what we need if we do the whole transit area. This is an additional 813 units. But again, you know, we talked about this a while ago, the different dials that you want to kind of turn up and turn down. You know, if we were to reduce the size of the transit area district, you need to make up those units somewhere else. And that could be adjusting the dimensional requirements in the Granite Ave portion. It could be choosing an entirely additional district. But the result that UTIL kind of came to after this initial kind of baseline analysis is, you know, there's a clear pathway towards the unit capacity number of 2,461. You know, this exceeds it by more than 50%. You know, we probably are not really that interested in overshooting that number by very much. We'll want to make sure that we kind of hit it, you know, relatively exactly. The troubling thing is that we only hit 7.7 dwelling units per acre. And I want to get some feedback from UTIL about kind of why they think that's happening. Because if you, if you look at it from a kind of individual parcel level, if you take one of those 5,000-square-foot kind of parcels and say, we're going to put three units on it, that's three units on 5,000 square feet. There are 43,560 square feet in an acre. You know, that's more than 15 units per acre on that individual parcel. Now, you can't just extrapolate that over the entire district because there's developable area, there's undevelopable area, and there's a sort of, there's a gross density number, and there's a net density number. So I want to get a little bit more of an idea of kind of what factors are going into that density. So, as you know, there are two kind of constraints here. One of them is unit capacity, one of them is minimum density. The fortunate thing that we have kind of in our favor is that the density of any individual parcel or any individual sub-district is not important. What's important is the average density of the entire set of sub-districts. And so if you have an area that you're not hitting 15 units per acre in, maybe you're only hitting five or 10, you can make that up elsewhere with, you know, 15, 20, 25, 30 units per acre, as long as everything kind of averages out, you know, to that 15-unit per acre minimum density. So that's kind of where we are right now. The other thing that I'll say is, I'm trying to juggle technical assistance providers in terms of, you know, doing the work of running these models. Like I said, the easy part is, you know, if we wanted to say, you know, we want three stories instead of two-and-a-half stories, or we want, you know, 30-foot setbacks instead of 10-foot setbacks, that's just changing numbers in a cell. You know, that's, it takes 15 seconds to do. It'll spit out a new number. We can kind of run those iterations. The more labor-intensive part of it for the consultants is redrawing district boundaries. You know, that's the kind of thing where that takes time, that eats into budget and scope. And so, you know, we kind of want to be deliberate about, you know, what our asks are there in terms of, you know, testing out those district boundaries. The good news is, well, there's two bits of good news. You know, the first bit of good news is MAPC is also offering technical assistance. I have a call with the housing coordinator over there. You know, they're prepared to help us do a second run at the model with some adjusted district boundaries. UTIL, we still have in our scope of work with them. You know, they're on the hook for a second iteration. So we've got technical assistance for at least two more iterations of district boundaries. And then finally, this is something that our GIS department is certainly capable of. It would take a decent amount of kind of training and kind of collaboration in how to use the model, but, you know, Alan can do this work. It's just, you know, there are consultants out there that are kind of working directly with DA-CD that kind of, you know, can kind of get this stuff done in a snap. So I don't want anyone to be kind of gun-shy about trying to test district boundaries. We'll do as many as we need to do to get it right. That's certainly, you know, something that we're interested in. But just in terms of like setting expectations of, you know, it's a lot easier to adjust the dimensional requirements than it is to adjust the district boundary. So that's something where, you know, if you want to test a couple of different sets of dimensional regulations, you know, that's fine. I want to make sure that we're deliberate about kind of the district boundary conversation. So that's what I've got for now. I'm going to stop my share for just a minute. And if anyone has any questions, or if we want to kind of talk about next steps, happy to, happy to do that.
Tim, it's Sean. Would you be able to share that document with us?
No, absolutely, I can do that. So it's the tool that they use, I actually, I asked if we can kind of download these boards as PDFs, which we probably could, but this link, this is a collaborative kind of, you know, design, you know, program. It's cloud-based. But I can send you a link to this, and you can kind of take a look at all of these. You know, so we can definitely send that around as soon as the meeting's over.
Thank you.
Tim, I have a comment and a couple of questions. My first comment is, one of the things that we had talked about initially was, because we've just gone through a really exhaustive, but a very good process of an overlay zoning district in the Milton Village in Design Guidelines, that, you know, we had talked about taking that area of that overlay zoning and taking it out, and I would be interested in seeing mapping done, which excludes that overlay zoning. I think it's potentially a local historic district we're looking at. It's a, it's a very unique area in town, and we did just do some real good work on that. So I'd love to see a map that excludes that. And I also had mentioned to you, Tim, I think one area that we should map is our DPW yard. That is a, that is a parcel that we control, you know, what we would want, but we could zone for it. And, and I believe you said that would qualify. So I would like to see the DPW yard. It's a large, large area. I think you said six, at least six acres. But to maybe see that, I personally would be interested in seeing that mapped, which leads me to a question. Can we do overlay zoning where, if we think that we have a, well, if we have an approved 40B project, can we do zoning? I'm just thinking of the Randolph Avenue, that maybe we could zone for something that's fewer numbers on that site, if it's not built yet. That might deter a developer from maybe doing, or it just, we could include that in our zoning.
Yeah. It would be case by case. One of the, one of the rules in the guidelines is you can do sub-districts, but each sub-district has to be at least five acres. And I think that's to sort of dissuade people from kind of just doing 1,000 little tiny sub-districts all over the place. They are looking for contiguous kind of largish, you know, areas where development's possible. So, you know, that being said, it's not, it's certainly something that we can look at, you know, in terms of sizing out some of those parcels, and, you know, if we have the, if we have the stomach to kind of zone around those, to get to five acres if necessary, we can certainly, you know, definitely take a look at that.
So two other, just a couple of other questions. So I know on the Brownfield site that I had talked about off of Truman Parkway, you said was just shy of five acres. Do you think it would be anything that we could ever request if it's just slightly shy of that five acres, to ask if they would consider allowing us, if we think it's a really good site, especially with the proximity to the train, the train line? It's one of the best locations for that. So if, will we be able to, you know, make a request for some, like, maybe a small waiver for something like that?
Yeah, you know...
Especially maybe if it was more density, if we went higher density there, you know, if that could be...
Yeah, it's a tough one, because I don't know how, how hard they're going to come down if, you know, we have an otherwise, you know, set of compliance sub-districts, and it's like, look, we have a really good planning basis for wanting to zone here. You know, it kind of doesn't, you know, the problem with that, with that site unfortunately is, you know, in and of itself is not five acres, and there's not an opportunity to kind of grab the parcels around it because they're all state-owned. And none of those parcels are named or planned for in our housing production plans. So, you know, if it was a situation where there are other parcels around it, you can kind of start to build a five-acre district there. So I think I would, I would maybe try to look elsewhere to get our numbers, but also I don't mind making a case for it, if it's something that we think is at the top.
Maybe we should just map it if we have, yeah, if we're doing mapping, you know, at this time, it might be just worth mapping for down the road. I just think it's a, it's a great site. It's not, it's one of the few sites not in a neighborhood, basically. And then the last question that I had was, what if, because I know in one of the, I believe it's the C district, in the area that's mapped, there's conservation land? What happens if there's conservation land within, on a site, on a property?
So the conserva, so number one, conservation land that is in the Commonwealth's kind of GIS system is already in the model as undevelopable land?
This is not state-owned land. It's a, it was sort of a, it was a neighborhood group that came together.
Yeah, so the other thing is, you know, because this is zoning, it's the same thing as anything else. Zoning is about zoning, and we're not talking about, you know, like a 40B-style comprehensive permit where there's any consideration of waiver of other local regulations. This would be our local regulations for land use. All the other land use restrictions still apply. If there's a local historic district, that's not zoning, you still have to comply with whatever that is. If there are conservation restrictions, then there are conservation restrictions, and you can't build. So that's something where, you know, if that's not, if that's not already being captured in the model as undevelopable land, you know, quite frankly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't raise the issue, because if it's, if it's counting as developable, but it won't be developed, then it's kind of a freebie in terms of unit capacity. You know, what becomes important is sort of maintaining that conservation restriction, you know, which is, which is something we've seen elsewhere, where, you know, you want to make sure that those get re-upped or they're perpetual, if we think that they're perpetual. But all of those restrictions still apply, you know, regardless of what the zoning is.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl, I see you have a hand up.
I was using the, well, first of all, I've attended a number of webinars, workshops, including last weekend at the Citizens Planning Training Collaborative Conference, which was out at Holy Cross. And Lieutenant Governor was the keynote speaker in the morning, and she spoke about MBTA communities. And then I also attended a workshop with DHCD sponsored on MBTA communities. And what I would say is, on the Granite Ave site, Lieutenant Governor seemed to indicate that the state's very interested in looking at state-owned property, if that's an opportunity for us. So I think the Granite Ave site is a good site, but I don't think two-and-a-half stories is using the site to the maximum, because one thought I have is, if we can find some sections or sub-districts that have higher density or higher height, then we can have portions of the sub-district have lower density and lower height. And we are only needing to get to an average, well, not only, but we need to get to an average of 15 units an acre, but we can have some, which are five units an acre. If you think about our C districts with a 5,000-square-foot lot and 43,000-plus square feet per acre, our C districts at 5,000-square-foot lots are already eight units an acre. So if we can look at doing larger, lower density, and smaller, higher density, such that we can average out to 15, I think that's going to actually work better than applying the same standards all the way across the one-half-mile catchment area of the MBTA station. So I was thinking, if you looked at, and the opposite suggestion of Meredith in terms of Milton Village, and one reason I was thinking that we could go higher in Milton Village is, we've already contemplated going higher in Milton Village. The thing that I don't know if everybody knows is that you can have Design Guidelines in these, in the zoning for MBTA communities, and you can have site plan approval, so you have a review process. You just can't make it a special permit process. And as Tim already said, you can have historic districts. So if we zoned at a higher density, where we already have higher density, so 88 Wharf, Milton Hill House, 36 Central, 131 Elliott, you can draw a district that captures those properties. It would also capture where Steel and Ray is, and where the Webb Mill Building is, and extra space storage, but it doesn't have to capture the rest of Milton Village. It doesn't have to capture High Street. So you could get a higher density there. And then at the other end of the catchment area, over by Madison Square where Unquity House is, you already have a higher density there and a higher height there as well. And you might have to expand a little bit to get to that minimum five-acre size in that area. And then another thought I agree with, looking at a Randolph Ave district, I think with the bus lines there, with 40Bs going there, it's already been determined that's a good place for multifamily housing by the state anyway. And we have larger lots and less density along Randolph Ave than we do along Elliott Street, and the Capin Street, and the properties that are in the C district. So the, I think that kind of fine-tuning or micro-tuning, rather than applying the same thing all the way across, you could, like Tim said, if you had that lower density and you have larger setbacks in the areas such are, that already have lesser setbacks, like the business district, maybe you don't need to go as much for the rear yard setbacks. I think that's what's going to be necessary, and we can see how that model, sorry, I'm losing my battery on my laptop, let me just plug it in. We can see how that spreadsheet models out and compare it to what UTIL's already done. So that, those are my comments for now.
And Tim, just, I know, you know, if, if and when we got to the zoning piece, just, you know, what am I concerned, you know, that East Milton, which I think would be a mistake, by the way, just to put it on the record, to do that as a, the business district as the zoning, is because it's a commercial district currently. Are we risking, you know, if we include those parcels, that you're, that you're absolutely, that you're going to, you know, somebody could come in and we lose the Milton Market, you know, the food center. Come in and we lose our commercial base, because again... know, the food center, come in and we lose our commercial base because again, I'm really concerned about, you know, increasing our commercial base, not losing it.
Yeah, and so it's a concern and I don't deny that at all. And it's actually not an uncommon concern. I think especially in Brookline, if you followed any of their conversations, it's particularly acute for them because they're looking at sort of the Harvard Street kind of corridor as their area and it's just like, you know, it's the heart of our commercial area, you know, we need this. So the, there's a risk and I think it's perfectly valid to be concerned about that and want to look elsewhere. A couple kind of caveats to that though. You can't require mixed use, but you can certainly allow it, right? And so if you were to rezone any area, you could say you're allowed to do ground floor commercial, you're allowed to do whatever. You just need to make sure that a purely residential option is available by right. And then, you know, as Cheryl kind of intimated earlier, there's nothing stopping you from putting restrictions or requirements above and beyond that minimum. So one thing that I had a conversation with the planner in Situate, you know, back in 2018, they did mix-use zoning around Green Bush Station, which is one of their commuter rail stations. And they did a sort of a buy right option, I think it was at 12 units per acre, and then a special permit option at 24 units per acre, you know, which had, you know, additional, there's, I don't know what the restrictions were, but there, you know, there were affordable housing, you know, obligations, there were other sort of things that, you know, we tend to like to put into a special permit process to sort of mitigate it. And what she told me was that, you know, to a project, every developer was picking the special permit option, you know, which had the ability for discretion, for additional restrictions, for additional goodies, for lack of a better term. Now, I don't know if that was because the buy right option was not economically feasible or the special permit option was just so irresistible that they went with it, but they had success doing that where, you know, in, you know, I'll use East Milton as an example, but any district could do this, where you say, okay, you can do 15 units an acre by right, or if you do mix-use commercial on the ground floor, you can do 20 units per acre or additional height or whatever it is. So there's an option sort of there if you wanted to sort of avail yourself of that. I couldn't quite find it. I have it on a tab on my work computer. But there was actually a story in the Patriot Ledger today about some of the, the sort of the real estate kind of groups in town really kind of rallying behind this law because of the opportunities they see, you know, for mixed-use commercial development. So I think the reason why the state didn't want to put, you know, the ability to do requirements for mixed use is, I think, a little bit of a overblown fear that towns would use that as a kind of a weapon to prevent development from happening where, you know, you'll be, you know, in a sub-district on Capin Street and say like, oh, you've got to build ground floor commercial or else you're not going to be able to. Well, no one's going to do that on Capin Street, you know, and so that's a way to prevent development from happening. That's what the state was looking to prevent. I don't think that there's an appetite for the worst-case scenario that the state is doing. That being said, Meredith, I 100% agree that it is a risk and you may not want to take that risk. And so I think that's a perfectly valid, you know, way to go. So that was a long thing, but I have had a number of conversations about that and I think, you know, especially, you know, a very long conversation with the planner in Brookline about their concerns about that. So, you know, we'll see, we'll see how that goes.
Great, Tim. Thank you for all your work that you're doing on this. It's certainly not easy.
Well, back to your question about conservation land. So with all that is going on around town with land getting taken with a proposal by eminent domain, I am afraid of conservation land being taken. I feel like the town is kind of going down a path that I'm not really excited about going down. So I'm really concerned about this going into areas where there will be conservation land issues and I don't want to go down that path. The other question I have is, you know, we received an email from Alex Whiteside, so I'm just wondering, Tim, if you have responded to him? He's, you know, a very active and very knowledgeable resident, so I'm hoping that you did give him the courtesy of a reply. And then lastly, with UTIL, I'm wondering if any of those, the money for the grant is being used for the fiscal impact analysis? Like where do we stand with that? And one more thing, sorry, is have we heard back from our representatives both at the state level and at the town level as to when they're going to come and talk to us?
So on question one regarding Alex's email, I have not responded to that particular email, although I have seen Alex in the interim. So he knows that I've gotten it and he knows that you've gotten it. I think that the issues and the questions that he raised in that email, I think are important ones. I don't think we're there yet, you know, in terms of the decision-making around like, okay, what is the preferred district or, you know, we're just so very far away from there that it's, I think it's more of the type of thing that like, let's keep those questions in our back pocket. I think that there's a lot of more research and analysis that needs to be done before we get to a point of like, okay, you know, here's, you know, we've just gotten half a dozen little bits of feedback about map this and kind of change this. And so I think there's a lot more kind of iteration to happen. I think as we get closer, you know, we'll want to make sure that, you know, we take as robust an approach towards decision-making and kind of taking feedback into account as we can. So I think, you know, Alex raised a number of good points, but not as relevant right now as where we are in the process as they will be later on. Your second question about, what was it? I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know what order they were in, but it was conservation land. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, so just to sort of, I want to make sure we don't mix up issues. So there's no, passing zoning is passing zoning and the people that implement and act on zoning are individual property owners. The town outside of passing the law kind of steps out of it. And so if there is land with conservation restriction on it, the laws surrounding that apply to that land. They apply to that landowner and they apply to anyone that wants to purchase or redevelop that land. You by and large can't develop on conservation land. And so, you know, those laws remain as robust under any new zoning as they are today. Any process involving the Conservation Commission and their jurisdiction over the Wetlands Protection Act or the local wetlands bylaw still apply under any zoning scheme. You asked about the elected officials. I think the stance, and I did hear from Senator Timothy's office, I think the stance that his office has taken is that, you know, the law has been passed and that the implementation of the law is a question for the administration. So I don't think that there's, how do I say this? They didn't take me up on the invitation to come to a planning board meeting. And so I think that may be something that if the board is really interested in that, someone with a little bit more juice than me is going to have to make the ask. In terms of, in terms of-
I think that's kind of unfortunate because they're the ones who approved this and so they really should be coming to us to explain the reasons why they voted for this and how they thought it would benefit Milton, because I'm still having a hard time understanding how it's going to benefit Milton. So I think it, I think they should come. And I would also be helpful to know what the talk is, you know, in Boston as to what are the other towns doing? I want to hear like our other towns pushing back. Aren't they pushing back? What are they planning on doing? So I think that conversations happen in Boston.
Yeah, I mean, so we know a fair amount of kind of what's going on. I mean, just on a formal level, all but I think four communities in the MBTA communities area submitted an action plan to remain in compliance for calendar year 23. Holden, Marshfield, Middleborough, and there's one more declined to submit an action plan. Middleborough has been vocal in their opposition and they're kind of intent to just not comply. I don't know what Marshfield is up to. There was an article in the Western Telegram about Holden, they're, you know, they're kind of internally kind of struggling with things. But by and large, every community that's in the area, you know, has submitted an action plan and is ostensibly, you know, pursuing those action plans. You know, the other bit of news is last week, the advisory that the Attorney General, you know, released regarding compliance. And I think that has kind of shaken up the conversation, you know, a little bit, you know, just in terms of her assertion that, you know, compliance is really not an option and that, you know, she's going to be looking long and hard at communities that choose not to comply and using, you know, the powers of her office at her disposal, you know, through civil enforcement actions or other, you know, legal measures, you know, to take on towns that don't comply. So, you know, for the humble bureaucrat like me, kind of that settles the issue. And any other kind of questions about compliance, I think those conversations would be happening, you know, at a higher level, you know, beyond, you know, me. I'm kind of trying to keep my nose down and get the work done.
So that's why it's important to invite the town administrator here.
Yeah, I mean, so I can talk to Mr. Malato about that. You know, what I would, you know, just, you know, I always ask this, if there's specific things that you want to talk to him about, if we can kind of, you know, get those in advance so that, you know, he knows kind of what he's getting into and can, you know, prepare, you know, answers to any questions that the board has, you know, that would be, that would be great. But he's, you know, he's 100% willing to come to the planning board. We've talked about it in the past. It's just, you know, coming up with the kind of a specific agenda for what the board is interested in him speaking to.
Well, I think, I think my point of view on what we would want the town administrator to speak to us about is exactly the point that you made. Regardless of what the Attorney General is saying, this has to go before town meeting and town meeting has to approve it. And if town meeting doesn't approve it, we're not moving forward as a town. So, you know, her tactics to try to influence towns to comply, you know, we're subject to the approval of town meeting.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. And I just, yeah, Tim, you know, in looking at these maps, I just want to reiterate Cheryl's comment on looking at amping up some of those areas like the DPW Yard, Granite Ave, to just, to take the pressure off of some of those other mapping districts. And if we could, I think we should map for that brownfield off the Truman Parkway because it's an excellent location, not in a neighborhood that I would love to see if we could get permission if everything else were to comply.
Rich has his hand up?
Sorry, just one thing on that comment from Meredith. At the conference session that DHCD spoke to that notion of these sort of independent pockets that aren't tied to others. I don't know how that's going to get sort of enforced or when they review, sort of that compliance model, Tim, but they said that they wanted this housing in neighborhoods. So just, I just mentioned that because a lot of these sites that we're talking about are isolated and not neighborhoods. I think we have to be mindful of their view on that.
Well, when I say neighborhood, they are in neighborhoods. It's just less of a, you know, they're butters on all these and this is, you know, it affects everyone, but that's a good point to maybe-
Yeah.
We don't have to emphasize that it's not in a neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, my professional opinion is that's, you know, it's good for the state to highlight that. What I will say is that, you know, these guidelines are providing us with a really sort of narrow path, you know, based on the existing conditions. So I think job one is to get something that, you know, on paper, based on the guidelines that the state has issued, gets us to compliance. And if there's style points that, you know, the state wants to judge us on, I'll be interested to see that. One way or the other, half of the district is going to be in, you know, in an established neighborhood, there's no way of getting around it. So I think, I think it's a point that's well-taken, but, you know, we'll, let's see if we can get there.
Okay, thank you.
Rich had his hand up?
Oh, Rich, yes, you please.
No, it just sounded like we were nearing the end of the MBTA's meetings and I just wanted to time check 10:30 or was there, I personally can't go any longer, so I just wanted to see if we were done with the MBTA communities.
If you don't have any comments on it, yeah, sorry.
I have a little bit of homework. What I'm going to do is we'll get some additional mapping of some of those additional districts, whether it's UTIL or MAPC that gets it done. We will kind of, you know, test those out and see how those go. I will also ask for some adjustments to those dimensional requirements in some of the larger districts, you know, again, just to sort of get a realistic idea of, you know, some larger developments on larger sites and we'll kind of keep you posted on that. The other thing, and we don't have to talk about it very much at all right now, but I do want to kind of put the finishing touches on a scope of work for the fiscal impact analysis. I think that the scope that we have worked on so far kind of mixes in some other planning and visualization aspects that I, you know, upon further reflection, think that we may want to scope those out separately. So I think getting started on that fiscal impact analysis, I think is going to be important. So we'll prepare something for the board's consideration maybe at the next meeting and then we might be able to have a more detailed conversation about it. But in the meantime, I think we're all set for now.
So, Tim, can I just ask a question about that? You know, one of the fiscal impact analysis, a lot of people have this understanding and I know there's this characterization of unit capacity versus production, but, you know, 2,461 new units in an area that's already built out that we've talked about. We already have probably close to that in the mapping that I looked at with residency. So how are we arriving at, what's the build-out analysis that's going to inform the financial analysis going to be based on? Is it going to be based on the fact that an area has its own capacity as if it's a greenfield when we know it's not a greenfield? And when you made the presentation and you said, for example, if there's a single family on a property and you're allowing for a three-family on the property, you're increasing it by two units, not by three units. So I just want to make sure that we all understand what we're getting for a build-out analysis and therefore a financial analysis is something that's somewhat realistic.
Yeah, I think that's going to, you know, be the thing that informs kind of the finishing touches on the scope of work is, you know, what are the assumptions? You know, what is the timeframe? What is the assumption of build-out in that timeframe? You know, because again, you know, full build-out is very unlikely and the timescale, if it ever happens, is kind of geological as opposed to, you know, in our kind of lifetimes. And so those are going to be important assumptions that get baked into whatever the analysis is. So again, it's a well-taken point and the board's going to have to kind of plant some markers down and figure out where they want a consultant to go. But in the meantime, we'll try to put all the other pieces of the scope together, you know, for you guys to discuss that.
Great, all right. Okay, thank you. And with that, I think we can now go on to our last agenda item. And that was a helpful discussion tip. And that was a helpful discussion, Tim, thank you. This is the discussion of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. And I know there've been a lot of letters, comments, this was, I think there was a letter that was being drafted by the master plan implementation committee that you've been working on. And so I think this is just a good time for us to have a check in on this. I actually was a little surprised that it was going direct to the select board without coming to the, the planning board. And, you know, I think we've talked about this, Cheryl, but communication is really important and I feel like, you know, we shouldn't have to go to the, attend master plan implementation committee meetings when something like this, which is planning, you as our rep, I would just hope would come to the planning board with it and ask for comments. You know, we're all very interested in seeing this done. I think there's a lot of great work that's been put into this. But I think there's a lot of comments that maybe our board might have before asking for it to be adopted by the select board. So I just, I, I know.
So, so Meredith, you know, we come back to this notion that somehow people have an idea that the master plan implementation committee is a subcommittee of the planning board. It is not that. We all serve on committees as a representative from the board. I don't recall once hearing from any other member of the board what's been happening on any committee that they are representing the board on.
So this is, it is a different structure, Cheryl. I, I just, I need to correct you. It is a different structure. We are, the master plan implementation committee, there's a reason why it is appointed jointly by the select board and the planning board. And that in the directives of the master plan implementation committee is that it is expected to report to both boards.
Correct, it's a twice a year report. And twice a year report, and I've asked for you to put committee updates on the agenda a number of times, and I, I didn't get any notification that you were going to request this actually for this meeting. So it was, you know, a little bit surprising. The, the, the master plan itself has a number, quite a number of implementation strategies. And the reason that the committee that I was on recommended that the implementation committee consists of a representative from both the planning board and the select board is because a number of the recommendations have no planning board role and a number of the recommendations rather have a lot of different boards, committees, and departments who are the lead role, the lead responsibility. The planning board is not the lead responsibility in the master plan for this particular item. This particular item, I think, had the bicycle advisory committee as one of the lead partners. And that's the committee that came to the master plan implementation committee several years, a number of years ago, asking us to support and move forward on the implementation of that plan. In a similar way that people came to the master plan implementation committee and asked us to get involved with Milton Landing, a similar way to help the library, get involved, to move forward on their parking needs, because all these, there's a number of these things that are in the master plan themselves. So what we did was we agreed to seek funding to move forward on that plan. That funding was approved by town meeting at least five years ago, I believe. And so the, the town meeting all knew that this was going to happen and it would be funded and MAPC was going to do it. The, the process itself was run through the planning department. They, MAPC held a public forum on it. Before that, they, they issued a survey through the planning department that had over 500 respondents. A draft of that report was circulated to the select board and the, I don't know if it went to the planning board, but the final draft was, was submitted for review. But it's, it's not a document that we had on the MPIC prepared. So any board, I suppose, that wants to take an interest in a particular implementation of a particular part of that plan could seek to come to our committee and ask to be involved in it. But to say that that particular plan was something that was a lead of the planning board, I think is incorrect.
And I did not say it was not the lead of the planning board, but the master plan itself is a document approved by the planning board. So all the items that are within the planning board, excuse me, within the master plan were signed off by the, the planning board. It's just, it's, it's respectful to bring it to us. You know, I'm working on the open space and recreation plan. I certainly would want the input of my fellow board members because I'm a representative to that committee. So that, it's just, just in the future, that would be just great, you know, as our representative, just when there are planning initiatives that are, that are significant. And there's, this talks about changing roadways, you know, in really significant ways, widening them, turning them into possibly, you know, one way. I think that's, that's something that has to be vetted, you know, in whether, you know, traffic, you know, there's a lot of different groups who should have their eyes on this before anything's adopted. And I think this is a very good document that MAPC is, has adopted. But I think, I think just, you know, respectfully bringing it, any planning initiatives like this, just as our representative, I would personally like to see the planning board ask for comments, but enough said, I've said enough.
I would request that you put on the agenda, as I've requested before, our committee updates. And I would love to hear what's happening on the open space committee as well as the capital improvement committee and any other committee that members are participating in.
Absolutely, yeah. Because we're very early in the stages, but I'm happy to do that, yeah. Anyone else?
So, you know, Cheryl and I've attended the master plan implementation committee meetings on the bike path because my neighborhood is greatly concerned about it. And Tim was really kind enough to, to zoom in to one of my Hillside Neighborhood Association meetings when we asked him to come and present this. And I have been aware of this, I did take the survey. I didn't go to the, for some reason, I missed the, the forum on it. But I have been paying very close attention to this. And again, as Meredith mentioned, I think it's a great aspiration and I support, you know, bike plan, bike plan and pedestrian plans throughout the town. But especially in my neighborhood, there's, you know, a concern that they're, one of the things there's, their MAPC wrote that they're looking at widening Chikatobet Road to allow for bike lanes up to like five feet. And that would mean removal of trees and adding more asphalt into the Blue Hills. Also, they're contemplating thinking of making Unquity and Harland a one way. And so, you know, as one of our neighborhood reps reported back at MPIC the other day, we've had a lot, our neighborhood association has had a long history with the fire in chief, the, the fire and police of Milton, just making sure that we always have access for public safety. So there are concerns in my neighborhood and so my, as I mentioned earlier about MAPC is, I was just surprised that they didn't have outreach to really the most impacted neighborhoods. And, and in the letter that MPIC was putting forth to the selectmen, it didn't mention anything about neighbors or neighborhood association. It just was looking for a process with members of the community. It didn't really call out specifically to the neighborhood associations in the areas. And my only other issue was we were adopting it as the town's official bike and pedestrian master plan and where I don't think the bike, as you guys said at the MPIC meeting the other night, that the bike committee has not taken an official vote on this. So I don't think that this really should be like an official bike plan. Maybe it could be like an aspirational bike plan because my fear is, as I've said at the MPIC meeting, is when something gets labeled as a master plan, you know, if, you know, we're not involved anymore in like two or three years down the road, someone's going to take the master plan off the shelf and they'll be like, oh, they said they approved the widening of Chikatobet Road and the making of Harland one way. So that's just my fear is we're adopting it as a master plan and it will be a forever plan where maybe it should just sort of be like an aspirational plan.
So can I ask if everyone here who's attending the meeting has read the plan?
Yes.
Because I feel like it was delivered to everybody on this, on this board today. So perhaps everybody should read the plan. Maybe they should read what the bicycle advisory committee's meeting minutes have said about this plan and about this effort and maybe ask Tim to present why the, the planning department was also interested in this plan. Because you're speaking without the context of years of effort here and without a presentation of the plan, without the context for it, it just seems inappropriate to me.
Well, I, I haven't read it and I'd like to read it. And I think your point is a very good point. I think a presentation is appropriate. And I wasn't, I wasn't, I haven't been part of whatever its history is, Cheryl, for how many years long it's been going on, but I have an interest in it. And I guess I'm hoping that we can have enough collaboration amongst all of us that if there's anything related to our responsibilities of planning, I think we should know it and understand it. So I look forward to a presentation on it.
That would be great, yeah.
Well, that would need to come through the planning department and MAPC as they were the lead sponsors of this. It was not a MPIC led effort. We just supplied the funding and we participated in the process.
That's great, yeah. All right, Tim?
Happy to put together any information or presentation that the board's interested in. You know, we have presented the plan in various stages to MPIC and to the select board and I don't remember if we've, how formally we've presented it here at the planning board, but I know we've talked about it. You know, the thing that I want to kind of make sure is clear and I've been in touch with the bicycle advisory committee, they're, they're preparing, you know, their comments to the select board. As you can imagine, you know, they would want those comments to be, to be pretty detailed, so it's taken a little bit. You know, MAPC did the work that was asked of them with the budget that was provided. And, and that scope of work was developed, you know, by, primarily by the bicycle advisory committee, you know, which is the committee that's appointed by the select board to advise them on these types of issues, you know, in collaboration with the planning department and, and, you know, with, with, with funding from, from, from MPIC. So, you know, the, the scope of work was executed as, as it was contracted with them. You know, for, for this type of planning, the level of engagement was, was appropriate. And, and what I'll say about, and I've been to a number of meetings, I've had a number of discussions about this, what, what people are asking for in terms of the, the level of, of, of planning and involvement that would, that would kind of suit what I've heard from, from, from people that have commented on this is, is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And quite frankly, we would need a bike planner, you know, to go into every neighborhood that the bike plan touches. Definitionally, the bike plan touches every neighborhood, you know, because MAPC was asked to help us, you know, begin to design a network of bicycle and pedestrian facilities that, that get people in town where they need to go safely, efficiently, and comfortably. And so, you know, it's not just, you know, and I'm very glad to get the invitation from the Hillside Neighborhood Association, happy to have, to have gone to their meeting. It was a really good meeting, we had a really good discussion, you know, people asked really good questions. You know, but, but just because they're the ones that kind of shoot me an email and invite me somewhere, you know, you, you can't just do that. If you're going to go and talk to every neighborhood, you've got to talk to every neighborhood. And, and that means really deep, meaningful, time consuming and expensive engagement, you know, to come up with a plan that, you know, can, can kind of boast that level of engagement. We, we don't do that kind of thing very often because it's extraordinarily expensive. And so what this style of, of master planning does is, you know, we ask the subject matter experts, you know, these are our priorities as a town for our bicycle and pedestrian network. Help us figure out what we need to do to implement them. You know, we ask for a safe, efficient, connected bicycle network and the transportation planners at MAPC said, this is what that looks like. I, I've said this in a number of forums, you know, there are, for the different kind of levels of, you know, types of interventions that are proposed in the plan, there are already in place appropriate levels of engagement for how those projects get implemented. You know, when it's something like, you know, paint some bike lanes on whatever street that's getting repaved next, you know, we already do that. We have a complete streets prioritization plan, we have a complete streets policy that, that, you know, effectively requires us to include bicycle facilities when it's appropriate under our paving program. For more robust and quite frankly, intensive interventions, changing the direction of streets, changing the orientation of streets, changing the dimension of streets, you know, the select board is sort of the, the chief of, of ways in town. And so all of those interventions are subject to a public process via the select board. The select board is, is, you know, required in those cases to seek the advice of the traffic commission, which again, meets publicly and is comprised of, among others, the town engineer, the DPW director, the fire chief, the police chief. And so, you know, when you're doing a kind of broad, wide ranging master plan, you know, you're not necessarily going to sit down with the fire chief on, on every inch of roadway where you're drawing lines on a map. But, but that input is baked into the process, you know, if and when implementation gets decided. So, and, and, you know, I've said it again in other forums, you know, there's additional layers of, of engagement that if, if we're interested, we can certainly sort of bake those in. So I think, you know, when you're talking about a townwide plan, you know, there's a lot of interest, you know, on, on individual sort of project level scale in neighborhoods that are, that are impacted. But who's excluded from those conversations is the other people who are impacted that don't live in that neighborhood, who want to get to the Blue Hills on their bike or who want to get from West Milton to the Fruit Center on a bike, that want to go from Colicott School, you know, to, you know, Kelly Field. You know, the, a transportation plan and a bike network is a different sort of animal than kind of a development project or zoning where everyone in town is affected in a different way. And, you know, when you start to pick apart pieces of the network, it starts to become less effective. And, and so, you know, you're kind of, you're, you're, you're kind of defeating the purpose of the plan when you start to kind of pick apart things because certain people in certain neighborhoods think that there's going to be a negative effect. Well, there's going to be a negative effect if you, if you, if you don't do the plan. You know, and, and the, the final thing that I'll say is, you know, I sit on the traffic commission as well and a meeting doesn't go by where we don't hear from multiple neighborhoods begging the town to do something about speed, about safety, about traffic calming. And, you know, this bicycle and pedestrian master plan is, is an element of, of the town trying to be proactive about providing facilities that create a safe environment for people riding their bikes, create a safe environment for people that are trying to walk to school, to shops, to work, to the bus. And so, you know, we had a traffic impact mitigation planning process a couple of years ago and it was the number one recommendation. It was recommendation one, two, three, four, and five, safety, speed, safety. You know, this is what the town is interested in. And so, you know, when we start to come up with a plan that kind of moves us in the direction of implementation, if we need to kind of reconsider, you know, what are our priorities? Is it, is it safety or is it something else? Is it, is it safety or is it something else? You know, those are conversations we need to have as a town. So 100% you know, think it's appropriate for the Planning Board to take a look at this and to provide their comments. And, you know, ultimately, you know, the reason this goes to the Select Board is because the plan by and large recommends interventions on the streets and that's the Select Board's purview. But I think they're definitely interested in hearing input from all of the relevant boards, including the Planning Board. So I think it's definitely appropriate, you know, to take a good long look at it. I would just ask you to kind of look at it in the spirit of, you know, this is a first step towards a future where there are plenty more steps, you know, to go through to evaluate things and implement things and that, you know, if you don't start to take this first step, then you might have a much harder time taking those additional steps later on.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments?
Oh, and just, and just to wrap up, Meredith, you know, we can kind of look at the future of agendas and figure out when the most appropriate time to talk about this all before us.
And it may be just simply, yeah, and looking at how things are worded, not saying that this shall be done, but this, you know, future discussion, you know, around some of those more significant things. But, but yeah, let's save that for, and I think a presentation would be great and we'll look at scheduling that. And it's a great document, it's a great project, you know, I fully support our getting a plan, so.
Meredith, we've got, Lee Toma has his hand up.
Oh, good. Yes, welcome.
Good evening, thank you.
If you can introduce yourself and just say your address, please.
Yes, Lee Toma, former Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, 58 Aberdeen Road. I'd just like to say a few words here and add in a little bit, Tim said a lot, that covered a lot of our thoughts on this. I'd like to give a little background from the Bike Committee's perspective. So first of all, I'd like to thank the Planning Board and the Planning Department for the past work in developing the plan up to its current state. The Bike Committee has sought for the town to develop and adopt a bike master plan since at least the year 2000. So the purpose of the plan is to acknowledge and address that there are major gaps in sidewalk and bike route networks that many people need to use to get around town. Under current conditions, many areas lack sidewalks and crosswalks and bike lanes end arbitrarily in many places. So a plan like this would help the town to identify and close those gaps and make the town safer for walking and biking. In general, the Bike Committee supports the proposed plan. At February 22nd meeting, all but one member voiced support for the plan and the one dissenter noted things like typographical errors and discussed some of the concerns that members of residents and members of other committees have also shared, while also pointing out the plan puts forward concepts that would help improve safety for people traveling by all travel modes, including driving. But the plan doesn't really note how these concepts would do that, so I think that's kind of overlooked in some of the discussions here. So elements of the plan would help slow speeding, especially at intersections, help keep pedestrians and bicycles separated from car traffic, add sidewalks where they're missing, and make crosswalks shorter and safer for people, especially children and seniors who have difficulty making those crossings. Proposals like a cross-town trail and quiet side streets or so-called neighborhood routes building off of the existing pine tree road path would help make Milton more walkable and takes inspiration from peer communities like Wellesley and Lexington, which have very nice walking trail networks. So the Bike Committee is preparing a letter of support, which I expect will be finalized at its next meeting. I'd just like to make a couple other comments. So for example, Milton's high walk and bike rates got the town an $800,000 state grant to improve sidewalks and crosswalks near the Glover School. And Bike Committee does counts and sees as much as 10% of the middle school population bikes to school. So we'd like to encourage that, especially since youth who are too young to drive depend on being able to get around by bike. So there's potential to reduce traffic congestion, but also secure more state funds for road projects around town. And better sidewalks could also benefit seniors like my grandmother who tripped and fell on an uneven local sidewalk. So the town's current network has a lot of places that are intimidating to bike or walk in, and that basically just encourages more people to drive and creates traffic congestion. Making Milton into a more walkable and bikeable community would improve residents' quality of life and is in line with the town's master plan, the traffic mitigation plan, and climate action goals. So these concepts put forward in the plan are intended to help improve these conditions and also, as Tim mentioned, by calming traffic. So it may not emphasize how it does that, but as Tim pointed out, residents expressed frustration about road safety in person in multiple surveys at the Traffic Commission and Traffic Mitigation Committee meetings and in forums online, you see that all the time, too. And I'd like to point out the town's recent Capital Planning Committee allocations towards traffic calming and street infrastructure also align with these elements of the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan goals. So the Bike Committee realizes that the plan is aspirational and that before any specific proposals are implemented, they'll be reviewed thoroughly by the town and modified to meet the needs of all residents and comply with current standards. And the committee recognizes that some of the concepts that have been presented may not be feasible because of environmental issues, redway limitations, cost, and other considerations. So we don't, we don't expect that everything in the proposal will actually be built out, but we see it as a framework to work from to help improve conditions around town. We see it as aligning with the town's complete streets prioritization plan for expanding sidewalk network and bike infrastructure for people of all ages to walk and bike to local destinations like schools, to transit, businesses, and churches. And having a plan in place would also allow the town to qualify for more state infrastructure grants, much like the complete streets plan that I recommended the town adopt has secured over $800,000 for sidewalks, trails, crosswalk signals, and intersection improvements for the town for the past few years. So I believe that the plan's focus on improving the pedestrian and bike infrastructure will benefit home residents and help the town meet its equity, climate, and open space goals. And I hope that the town will adopt the plan and implement proposals that align and make sense for the neighborhoods. So I appreciate all your support and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. So glad you could come on. Thank you, Lee. Okay, it's after 11:00. I promised Cheryl we would break at 11:00, so I think that we'll get that on the schedule. And I don't have anything else on the agenda. We actually made it through. So if the members are ready, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
Okay. And then roll call, I think Rich is gone. Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night, thank you.